We could remain standing and remember longtime resident Doris Sable and the men and women in the armed forces. Thank you. Okay, any public comment on agenda items? Yes.
Mike Joyce, member of the village. This is the Georgia memory there. I'll wait till you finish.
I'm finished.
Are you? Last, the last time we had a meeting, I asked you about the FEMA money. I said, was there a problem? And you were like beating around the bush and I said, is it yes or no? And sir.
Mike, please just sit for a second. I apologize. That's not on, that's not on the agenda, so you can get up later and ask the question.
You said with no problem.
Is there any, anything else on agenda?
There isn't a problem.
Yeah. On agenda items, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Number fourteen and number sixteen on your agenda, I just want to know, is there ever going to come a time when this village board is going to do things legally, morally, and ethically correct?
Which one's fourteen? Tell me about fourteen.
Fourteen, first of all, you're not supposed to have one brother supervising another, much less than recommending him for recommend, for promotion. You couldn't have had somebody else like Tim Green do it?
Do?
Recommend?
And what is sixteen?
Sixteen, is he gonna pay back the money he stole from taxpayers or no? That just gets wiped away.
Nothing's getting wiped away.
Okay.
Any other item, any other comments on agenda items? Yes.
The approval of the lacrosse clinic in Highland Falls for kids, once again, we have to reiterate that these really need to be, they should be under rec because they're under recreation in every other community in Orange and Rock. And I made several calls today to confirm that. I don't think that the board needs to be running the parks when we have a parks director already hired by the town. I believe that-
We don't run the program. Is that what you mean?
You're, no, I didn't, I, I, you approve, you're approving events.
The use of the village.
Correct, why normally that's done by recreation departments across the board. I think we have a few other things to worry about, but that's just me. Why do we need another depository where the last one we had out of town, there was a lot of issues going on and there was money being taken? We know for a fact, we don't have to question it, it was happened. I don't understand why we're going out of town unless there's, this is a new bank that I don't know about.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Say that again, we just got money missing.
There is a Hudson Valley Investment Advisor Inc.
Right.
Is going, is, you want to approve that as a new depository for the village? Are they within the county?
No, Orange County.
Orange County. Okay, so we have one down in Rockland. And we were bringing change down there from the-
Oh, from the meters.
From the meters. And the money, very often, when the, the president or whoever manages the bank came out, knowing that that's all they were there for, questioned, why are you coming down to Rockland to deposit all the change from your thing? Finding that there was an indiscre- a discrepancy between, oh no, I have the, I have the facts and I'm gonna show you neither. Had finding there's a discrepancy between the money going in to the machine and the slip that was brought back to the village with the cash. We didn't have a, we didn't have a regular account there and there was no point in having an account there. And so I'm just questioning, is this another, gonna be another area where money is gonna go missing for this village? Because we have several depositories. I, if we're gonna do it, I would love to know why. We have an extra depository.
Are we planning on answering all of these questions as we go through the agenda? Or are we just letting people talk and never answer-
It's public comment.
Any of their questions?
It's public comment.
So you're planning on answering them, is my question?
It's public comment.
So you're planning on answering them, is my question?
That's it for the agenda. Well, thank you, I will be back. Anyone else?
Yeah, I got a question. You have here introducing a law for amending the zoning law for the village of Highland Falls. What is, what's the amendment going to?
Well, I'm gonna read it out of the resolution. It pertains to height zoning apartment. What we, what the board decided to do, majority anyway. This is part of the comp plan. But we're gonna take it out of, not take it out, it's gonna be in the comp plan, but we're gonna take it out, if I can say it that way, and address it now.
Okay.
Because it's gonna take a while for this comp plan to be approved. A while. This way, these things that people seem to be most interested in can be taken care of.
We're gonna make it a law instead of just being part of the comp plan tonight.
Not tonight, just introducing.
Yeah, just introducing today. I'll give you the date of the public hearing.
I'd like to make a reference, I guess it would be-
I'm gonna have to put numbers up.
The last, the last thing on there.
Okay.
John Walker. I just feel obligated to say a few words about him. He's a good friend, former employee, and I know he's very embarrassed at this time. So I'll try to keep it quick. Most of you know who I am, but for those of you who don't, my name is Kevin Smedman. I owned and operated and now bought a parts store in the village for seventeen years. I started as an employee in nineteen seventy. I worked with and hired many employees over the years. One day, a representative from Big Brothers and Big Sisters approached me about supporting a youth in my work. At the time, I was fully staffed, very busy with my business. I didn't want to take upon anything else. He was very persistent. And after thinking about my mother's own little childhood, I decided to give it a try. Fortunately, the first youth I sponsored didn't last ten days. He either never showed up for work and didn't want to be there when he did. I told the representative that I was gone. He said he had one more kid that he really wanted to work and please give him a chance. His name, I said, one more and that's it. This kid's name is John Walker. John was a quiet, shy, withdrawn kid who you could tell he didn't have any social skills. I asked all my employees to support him. Just as when I first started, his first duties were to sort things, sweep mop the floors, which he had no idea how to do, take out the garbage, wipe down the shelves. Then he was taught how to stock the shelves. One thing that we all started to notice was that he was becoming more social and that he wanted to learn more. And so he did. He got his driver's license so that he could make deliveries. He learned enough about the auto parts business that he became a counter man, answering phone calls and cuss and waiting on customers as they came through the door. He was an important part of our half team. As we spent more time together, he started to open up about his personal life. His father left him when he was young, his mother wasn't there for him, and his father was nothing but trouble. He was being raised by his grandmother who called Ma. Ma was very proud of John coming out of his shell and excelling at his first job. And you could tell John was also. He took pride in his work. John worked for me seven years. He became one of my best employees and a very good friend. I made it a rule not to get too friendly with my employees, but John was an exception. He became a family friend. John would ask me what I was doing for the weekend. I once told him I would build the stone walls of my house. He said, oh, can I help you? I want to learn how to do it and you don't have to pay me. I laughed and told him sure. He always wanted to learn more. The day that John told me that he landed a job at the village was one of my proudest days of my life. I was so happy for him, seeing how far he had come since I first met him. As you all know, John Ward is worth ethnic with him. He was eager to learn and eager to move forward. He truly loved his new job with the village. I remember when I first hired John, he couldn't even ride a bike. Now he was riding past my store and going to the store. Then I got the news on what he had done that brings us all here today. I talked to John and told him how disappointed I was with him and how I knew that he knew better and had let a lot of people down. John is truly sorry for his actions and very disappointed in himself. He realizes that it was a very bad lapse of judgment on his behavior. He is willing to accept any actions that the board deems necessary. I'm here before you to try to give you a peek at the person that John truly is. He's a hardworking, good-hearted person. What John did is unacceptable and deserves punishment, but I always believe that most people deserve a second chance and I believe that John is one of those people. Given a second chance, I believe he will be a better person and even a better asset to the village. And if you decide not to give this a second chance, then at least this will be a better person. Thanks for giving God the truth.
Thanks. Agenda items? Yes.
I just have a quick question on, when we spoke, you and I, I don't see our agenda on here. We were supposed to speak about the senior center.
Yeah, well, I think, I see people here, I was hoping, I guess I was wrong. I thought when we met last week, my reason for me was to see if we could work things out and I think we did to some degree, but maybe, okay.
But I never was under the assumption you were taking off the agenda.
So it, we, it's on, it's, it's not there, but yeah, we're, yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
No problem.
So I'm sorry, so if it is on the agenda, she can speak now?
Yeah, she can speak now.
I know we spoke and, and about the insurance and everything. And when we did speak in that meeting, you said that you spoke to your insurance person and you told me it was Nick Pott, the dentist.
No.
Well, that's what they told me to contact, so I contacted-
No, no, someone told you to contact him to get insurance. We, we have a company in Rockland County.
Okay, and so that's-
We've never had Nick.
Okay, well-
Nick does a lot of insurance for people who want it.
Okay, so, because he, you, you told me, they said, you said to contact him in regards to insurance and also to discuss, you know, why we need insurance. I mean, I still believe that, you know, you, you need to create a policy for this building, you know,
And we talked about that.
And I hope that does come about. But, you know, I know you said that we should get insurance, but that has, that it wasn't voted on in any meetings or anything. Prior to this, you had said that anybody fifty-five years old that could come in-
Ma'am, it's not a vote, ma'am, it's not a vote. It's, it's required by our insurance company.
Okay.
That's not true.
About two weeks ago, ten days ago, trustee Carol was in the office, conference room that you were in, and you had seen me at a street fair, Farming Street, and you bought up insurance. That was a Saturday. On Monday, on Monday, Mr. Carol was in the office with me and I said, Pete, let's call up the insurance company right now. Put him on speaker, I called up the insurance company that we have in Rockland County and a lady answered the phone, I told her what I, my question was and I said, look, you can get back to me, just get back to me in a day or two. I, I don't have to, I don't have to get back to you, I know the answer right now. I said, okay, that's great. You have that, anyone who uses this building has to have insurance. I said, okay, that's all I'm asking. So, to say it's not true, then, then we're saying that maybe, then we're saying maybe the insurance company's lying. I don't know who we're saying is lying, but I'm telling you the truth.
I just don't, I spoke to-
I can't go by it. I'm sorry.
You know what, you know what, this is like really, this is like really stupid of me. You come in the office tomorrow.
It's stupid of you to actually lie to the people like that.
Excuse me? You come in the off, you come in the office tomorrow and we'll call the insurance company and you ask it your way.
I already spoke to them.
Okay.
Other thing is to get into the building, keys and everything. What would you, how would you go about getting in and out of the building?
Well, I think we had some type of unwritten policy that if someone wanted to get in here, they would go to the police department and then they would come and unlock it. Now, I do know that the Highlanders, because of the amount of time they're in here and because we didn't have this, we only had them here and they're here a lot for different, different things, from events to goating and sowing and all the stuff that they do in their meetings, they have a key.
If we start a club and we're in here a lot, we should have a key as well.
If, if we're gonna keep that policy with the Highlanders, you're, you're correct.
Okay. And we just also discussed the shared space about utilizing the building and that we would be able to have a closet.
Right there.
Yeah.
And you, you didn't take that off for the other day, but it's still there.
No, I, I know it is and I said, when we get, get done, we will contact them and do that and we'd be able to utilize everything else. But as we grow, I think the building's equal, so we should also, we might, that the whole building should be equal. You know, and depending, you know, it shouldn't be just the Highlander first. It's, it's a, a public building, so everybody should be able to utilize it. And also, I was wondering in regards to insurance, so every person, any club that comes in here has to have insurance? But the building's public, so do you have to be part of a club to come into this building?
I don't know what that means. I don't know what you mean.
Oh?
Huh? We answered with that, no. No.
Simple question.
Okay.
Excuse me, I, I'm not as smart as you. Just give me, let me catch on a little bit.
Thank you, thank you.
You're, you're brilliant.
Well, that's why I-
If it's, if it's a god. If it's a private club and you want to do things in the building, it's real professional, then yeah, you're in charge.
Yeah.
Call her a jury.
You okay? You okay with that?
Well, I'm not, wait, you're speaking to people, but okay, I understand that, but you shouldn't be calling people. You're, you're supposed to be professional, you know.
Yeah.
But obviously-
Well, I'll speak to people.
Yes, yes, we are, but name calling is not appropriate. And also, the security cameras, what's the purpose, you know, what are the security cameras for?
Security.
Okay, and who looks at the security cameras?
I, I answered you the other day. I told you that the detective can look at it and the chief.
Okay, so-
I've never seen it myself.
Well, you said that, but I mean, I know that other people have seen it. I mean, otherwise, you know, people would not know that things were ripped off the wall or whatever, so that would show me that other people have seen it or information has been shared with the other group. I mean, we come in here, we want to be able to just do our thing. We don't want to feel that there's, we're being spied on or other people are looking at us. But you say they're not looking, but then tell me how they knew.
It's a municipal building, I mean, it's-
It's a municipal building, but it's not a private, private citizen should not be looking at the cameras, so-
I don't know what you mean by private citizens, but it's a public building that has cameras.
Then answer me how the information got out that someone ripped the thing off? And how, you know, we were having meetings here and everyone's saying we are having secretive meetings here. So can you answer that?
I, I actually have no idea.
Okay.
Okay, it's a simple question. They had a meeting and for some reason, the cameras that are in this building was shared with people outside of the police department when there was really nothing that was being investigated, but other people started using it against the people who were having meetings. Why, why is it that that happens? If you're gonna have these cameras here, it should be only for the purpose of security, not for it to be used as ammunition or negative things against people who are having meetings in the building, a senior citizen group. It just seems like it's being used to spy on other people for unnecessary things. Christine Manning is the president of a new senior club. They're interested in other things outside of the Highlanders, which is a senior club who is actually doing great things. They have more activities, they have wonderful things that are set up, but now there's a new senior group that has come in and for some reason, they have become competition. They're not asking for competition. Okay? And now they're being recorded when they're having meetings.
You know about it, you're on Facebook and you answered on Facebook, so-
I wasn't sure.
Okay, but you answered on Facebook, so-
You're right, I did, I know the subject, I just didn't know you were the spokesperson. Everybody, stop that.
Now they're being recorded when they're having meetings and the Highlanders are using those pictures and videos against them. It's so childish. This is not what the school PC or club is about.
I, I-
Um, let me, let me add one other question.
Yeah?
Okay, so, we're a club, they're a club, so the insurance for the Highlanders and everything now, the, the Century Garden, is that part of the?
I, I think they gave us insurance.
What?
Didn't they?
I don't know if they did.
But I'm just asking, is it part of the state scene of-
No, but anybody can go to the park.
Can you?
Okay.
Yeah, do we have insurance?
We do, and I also want to speak to that when I wanted to do as a senior canning and a sign language, but we did have to get insurance, that was a big thing.
Yeah.
And I'm seeing discrimination against special needs again, so-
I think you asked-
I'm not discriminating at all against special needs.
I gotta come this way.
I work with special needs, so I have no problem. I've dropped things off at your house, Ted, to give you your program. I have nothing against special needs.
Listen, Christine, I gotta come this way. Charlie, you gotta look this way. Don't, I can't do it. Don't do it.
When she's speaking, then I, I'm sure I'll have to-
Well, that's, that's, I'll stop her too. So they have the insurance, okay, what else?
Okay, well, I'm just making sure because it's also a club, you know? So that's a, kind of a third club that utilizes outside and inside, so-
Absolutely. Yes.
They're using, everyone who, that is a club, that utilizes the building, needs to use it, so.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Anyone else on, yeah, go ahead. Oh, wait a second. Okay, sorry.
Pablo Pulido, I think you have a vote. On the letter of resignation for John Walters,
if you don't know John Walters, who John Walters is,
is Mr. Donovan's nephew.
Yeah, that's my nephew.
That's his nephew.
Yeah.
And his remarks were, from what I hear, his, his remarks said, if nothing happened to my uncle when he stole the money, nothing is going to happen to me. He been stealing money, thousands of dollars.
This is completely inappropriate.
Thousands, thousands of dollars.
Public comment.
Oh, you're being, you're being-
That's okay.
You have a complaint, you may-
That's the truth. That's the truth. That's the truth, not taking it. That's the truth, not taking it. That's the truth. They did steal the money from all the taxpayers, for the taxpayers.
An accusation you made.
If you wanted to kick him-
You just don't like him, that's why you say so.
Your village attorney is giving you advice.
Okay, thank you, Pablo. We all heard you.
Yes.
It's not us.
Who else has their hands up?
I did, Joe.
Just a second. No, no, go, Jim, I'm sorry.
I don't know John Walter, but I know Mr. Smedman, I know Mr. Cowell, I know another, a number of people in this community that have spoken very highly of him. And I would just say that if we have the ability to give him a second chance, I think we should give him a second.
Thank you. Just a second, Kathy. Annie?
A second senior citizen group? Why? Why do you need a second senior citizen?
Annie, come over here, come over here.
I have to stand on the X.
Yeah, gosh, around that X kid.
Why? I need to know why. You splintered the first group.
That's, it is on your, it is on your agenda.
It is absolutely absurd. Why cannot the first group join the second group or the second group, I apologize, join the first group and add in your trips and anything else that you want to do? The fact that you want to be divisive and splinter Highlands group that's been in this community, my mother was a member in nineteen eighty-one. Give me a break. Liberal, I've been telling you.
Wonderful, wonderful that he is. It's not divisive, it is America.
It's divisive.
You can have more than one group.
Ridiculous, ridiculous.
It's not a competition.
Ridiculous.
And you shouldn't turn it into a competition. You are making it a competition. You should not, you should not.
Yes, yes.
Just to clarify, as far as the cameras going here, the Highlander meetings and crafting and all that is, is being filmed too. And we don't have an issue with it because we're not doing anything wrong here, so. But isn't the, the reason to have cameras in the village-owned building, I mean, if no one's here and someone should break in, you have surveillance to see who-
We have cameras at the wastewater treatment plant. We have cameras at the water plant. We have cameras inside village hall. We have cameras inside the police station. I don't know a building that you don't have cameras.
So it's a village-owned building and that is why you have cameras, not to spy on the Highlander or-
No, no. Correct.
Or whatnot, it's for a security reason.
Only.
Ms. Jones, let me ask you, they're not, they're not saying there shouldn't be cameras. I think Ms. Manning is saying is who has access to the video recording? And it seems that you and Ms. Gardulo had access to the video recordings because they signed on Facebook, okay, that you made mention or and Ms. Gardulo made mention or things that were on the video recording.
Go to the police station. If you feel like something, or stalking whoever other than the Highlanders, if they feel that they're in here and they see that any of their stuff is in damage or taken or whatever, go to the police station and foil it and you'll get it.
But you should have access to it.
So it doesn't matter if I have access.
No, I don't have access to it. The public shouldn't have access to it.
I don't have, I don't have access.
But there was a police report.
Go to the police station and foil it and you'll get it.
Oh, there's a police report? Was there a police report saying I'm missing something and I want to know who stole it? So therefore, look at the camera and then something is stolen?
No, no, they made a police report and they tore a sign down and drew it away.
Okay, so you did file a police report, there's a police report.
But it's on, I used to know to a police report if you liked.
There's a police report.
Oh, do that.
Oh, okay.
Pat, I, I'm reluctant to, but because you had your shot, but come on, come on. Only because I had something for the senior center and didn't say anything.
It's okay.
Because it wasn't on the agenda, but then we put on the agenda, so I just, I just want to get it done. Sorry.
Actually, I had it on before. This is also, every community, I said, I called six today and prior to, every community has their recreation managing the senior center and the senior program. We are not doing that, which, that, back in the day, Jim Willis would do a lot more with the seniors. Aaron Fork is trying to do much more, but without the use of a building that they're supposed to have, not much has gone on. The, the, the majority of the stuff happening now is very new. The building has been ours for about ten years and it's only this past year that a lot more activity has come. So for those people wondering, you know, why are we having two groups? In a lot of the communities I talked to, there are two to three groups. And two of the communities that I talked to are our size. It's not like Newburgh or something. They're our size and they have two to three groups. And one of the reasons being is that a particular number of seniors want to do what they want to do and they don't see that in the other group. There is nothing bad about that.
Right.
It means more stuff will happen and there'll be more opportunity here at the senior center. But I beg you, board, please allow the recreation department to run this building. They, my question, my question, when you want to answer a question, is which board member is in charge of the senior center?
None. The main-
That's the same answer I got when I was in office of who runs the rec, who, who handles recreation? What we all do. We all do means nobody does. When anyone says, well, we all look after the senior center, that means it's nobody's job. Okay? Whose job it is is Aaron Fork. And we have got to start giving up a little responsibility to get a lot more payback for our taxpayers. That's who we're supposed to be dealing with, not back and forth between anyone. The taxpayers are supposed to be winning. The seniors are supposed to be winning. A lot more programming will go on in this building and less BS for this board if the recreation department handle the-
That is correct.
So let me, uh, answer that, uh, Pat, the best I can, and, um, I appreciate the supervisors here in the audience. And, uh, it was a few years ago, Bob, I don't know, years go by quick now, I came down to your office and it was you and I and Aaron Fork, and I talked about possibly, knowing he has a very, very small space upstairs, that maybe he could come here and operate whatever it does, people sign up for Little League and all this, whatever they do, and, uh, all the good programs. And, uh, um, at that time, um, you thought that you would like to keep it the way it was. And then also on my end, I was wrong, because it can't be used for recreation, unless it's totally recreation for seniors. And that's not what Aaron does, he does the gambit from, from, from little kids all the way to, to senior citizens. And he is, I think Aaron works, I know the town gives the center on Main Street fifty-four hundred, right? No?
More than that.
More than that? Well, whatever they get, they, they, they get money from the town, that's fine, that's not, I don't have a, but a lot of Aaron's programs with seniors are also run through that center. I see it on channel twenty-three, that's the only reason I'm saying this. So, actually, that is being done to some degree, Pat, but again, we can't move rec up into here, as much as I thought that would be a good idea, but it was.
You're totally missing my point, Joe, I didn't say anything about rec.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I said, you're bringing in rec, I did not bring that in at all. One of the responsibilities of the recreation director is the seniors, they separate it very nicely. So that's what all I was saying was, a rec director, like every other community, should be handling the program of rec.
I got it.
Okay, and I, I apologize, my, my thing, what, my thing was the whole rec department, because as I was telling someone the other day, this way the front door would always be open, you know, and seniors could come in and watch that TV or do whatever they do in here. You know, while he's signing up Little League people out there, or wherever the setup, but I, I was wrong to even offer that. Uh, it was, it's not permitted. Anyone else on agenda, so I can, yes?
Can I just say something? So I went to the town supervisor, and I asked about the monies that were allotted for the seniors in the community. Um, Aunt Alina is in charge of the money, but she's also on our roster here, but I've never seen any, there's nothing left here, there's no trips being planned that way, and if they want, were going to do a trip, shouldn't they contact Kathy Rose, who's in charge of the trips of the seniors? I mean, it was before Salty, they were the only senior group, and no monies was ever allotted to them, so I'm trying to figure out where is that money? And why isn't it being used?
Well, you gotta go to the center for that, or the town, I don't know.
The local town, you know.
I don't know where it's.
So now there's, well, this is the town and you're the village, and I'm like, wait a minute. So there's a town, so the town isn't gonna answer my question about the village's building, and now the village tells me I have to, you know, my whole thing is.
I'm not, look, I don't like the next one.
I know, I know, I'm just.
I'm telling, what I'm saying to you is that the town in their budget has X amount of dollars that goes once a year, ten times a year, I don't know how they do it.
I know, I saw, but. I like to know how do we find out where it went?
To the center. So, so.
Is there, uh, someone responsible for doing a printout of what, who's?
Yeah. So we had a meeting, and I, I really need to get to the agenda, but this is a good question.
I don't know.
No, don't be, don't be sorry, that's what we're supposed to do. Uh, there was a meeting scheduled for, uh, Salty, um, Highlanders and Aunt Alina.
Okay.
Myself and trustee Carol, and what happened was, and then thank God everything went okay, Anne had a hip operation a week ago.
Okay.
So she couldn't come to the meeting. I bought her supper the other night, and she said to me, I didn't want to talk business, she said to me, Joe, in another week or two, I'm gonna be feeling much better, can we have a meeting, so I can, you can catch me up on your meeting that you had with Kathy and Mrs. Manning, and I said, sure, when you feel up to it,
Yeah, just questions and maybe.
you call me, I'll come sit on your porch and let's talk. So I am gonna get.
I can get listed questions, I?
Absolutely, I, I think I should.
Can I add?
Yes, you can email me, email me the questions, I'll be, a second.
Yeah, 'cause I just, I don't know.
She, she's a good person and, and, you know.
If you have any questions, you should be asking as taxpayers.
Yeah. Yeah.
And there's also money allotted for senior meals, and I don't know, I looked up and, and meals on meals is free.
Right, senior meals.
So I'm not.
No, Bob, Bob's shaking his head, no.
That might.
That's what I'm thinking now.
Yeah, Bob's shaking his head, no.
But it's still in the, it's in the budget, so just take a look at it.
Mr. Mayor, um, you know, we do have a new village clerk, and your policy, as is written and approved by this board and is on the back of the agenda, people should announce who they are.
You're right, I'm sorry, my fault.
It, it, it does a discrepancy to the new clerk who is not familiar.
Okay, so, and, 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 thank you, I apologize, I apologize to the clerk. When you come up, give your name, so we can write it down, okay? The twenty people I got up so far, when we review the tape, I can tell you who they are.
Thank you.
Okay. This is the agenda. New business, we have two years of, two different fiscal years that have bills paid. We have fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, which ended in June, uh, May thirty-one, ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. It always take three or four or five months, three or four months for bills still to come in from last year. For the new fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five, one million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-eight cents. May I have motion to pay each year as rep?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee DeSavio, trustee Carol, roll call.
Trustee Guerrero?
No.
Trustee Remus?
Yeah, I just wanna make a note, um, please, for Mr. Mayor. You have it highlighted, actually, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, we have one on there, uh, for seventy-two thousand dollars. And that was to fix a sewer break that, um, we can get into detail, I can speak about it after the meeting, but it's no fault of the villages, and it cost the village taxpayers seventy-two thousand dollars. Uh, I vote this.
Uh, trustee Carol?
Yay.
And trustee DeSavio?
Yes.
Mayor Denofield?
Yes, motion carries, thank you so much. Approve the minutes from the, we had a regular meeting on June three, twenty-twenty-four. Um, I read them today, I find no discrepancy or no errors, and a motion will approve.
So moved.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Close? A resolution introducing local law. Uh, do I have a number for that, Elise?
No, it is not assigned until the laws are.
Okay. Of twenty-twenty-four, amending the zoning law of the village of Highland Falls. Another second. If I have the right one. Village of Highland Falls, resolution intro- introducing local law of twenty-twenty-four, amending the zoning law of the village of Highland Falls. Be resolved that the introductory local law titled amending the zoning law of the village of Highland Falls be and is hereby is introduced by Mayor Denofield before the Board of Trustees of the village of Highland Falls, the county of Orange and the state of New York. And be further resolved that copies of the proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the Board of Trustees. And be further resolved that the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing of said proposed local law of the village of Ha- in the village hall, at the village hall, three oh three Main Street, village of Highland Falls, at seven P M. on September the twelfth.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
May I make a recommendation?
Yes.
This local law, uh, must be referred to Orange County Planning Department. Must also be referred to your planning board for their comments. My suggestion is that you wait to hold the public hearing until after you've heard from the planning board and the county.
You're absolutely correct. You're absolutely correct. So it has to go to the.
That way, otherwise, you would open it and it would just stay open.
So it has to go to the planning board, local planning board, and to the county?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take care of that tomorrow?
Yes.
To get that ball rolling.
Right.
So I won't name the date of the public hearing.
You can, you can certainly, I would think that, is that the second meeting in September?
No, it was, it was past the, the, the meeting date, so we actually could, if those organizations are, didn't get back to us in time,
No, no.
we could probably change it on the sec, on the third of September, if you wanted to leave that twelfth date.
Uh, they're, they're probably not gonna get back to you, but if the board wants to do that and then revisit it on, you know, at the, on the first meeting of the month, um, you can do that, it's just that there is a ten-day notice required.
Right.
County has thirty.
So, so given that, you know, I, I think your paper only publishes.
Right.
So it makes it very difficult to change dates at the last minute. You could certainly set it for the first meeting in October, which I think is more likely that you'll get feedback from your planning.
We didn't want to do it on a meeting night, we wanted to have a fun night just for it.
Okay, well, that's up to the.
No, but, you know, no big. And, and if I may, the county has thirty days, right?
County has thirty days.
Right. So, I'd like, can we make this public, please?
I'm sorry?
Can we make this draft public?
It is public, yes, it should be posted on the website.
All right. So. Perfect, because I would like some input from residents on it, I have a few questions.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, got it, you know.
All right, let's deal with.
We, we discussed a little bit of it, but I got the final kind of late. Uh, and, and I do have some questions, especially reading the old one that we're gonna go back to.
Um, and it changes some of the calculations that I previously had, which is okay, I just want everybody to know all facts.
That's a good thing.
Uh. Thank you.
Well, can I just make a comment so that the people understand what's going on? The board wants to introduce a law that changes the zoning requirements in the village, okay? That's gonna affect people who wanna come in and develop Main Street, okay? So they wanna introduce a law, and in for, in order for this law, which is significant, to be introduced, what they're saying is it has to be approved by one, our planning board, our local planning board, which is the town planning board, and also the Orange County Planning Board, before we can even conduct a public hearing. But I think what's important is for you guys to even know what the law is that we wanna change, that we wanna go up those levels before we introduce it to you for a public hearing, okay? So this is a law that we're trying to introduce to change the zoning, and I find it problematic. So that's how I would, uh, I would, uh, uh, say it to you.
So I, I want everyone to look at the, is it on the village website right now?
Not yet, sir.
No, no. By tomorrow?
Yeah, it's not gonna be out here till we move it.
Okay, so let's, uh, have the public hearing, I mean, after, after.
Introduce it.
So what are the numbers?
After the, uh.
I understand it, but.
After.
Can you not just give us the numbers?
Also.
Well, I can give you one quick number, um, just a little, yeah. So, um, previously, it was at, uh, the, the, the board previously went back to the twenty-five hundred square feet, right? So they're gonna knock it back down now, the proposal is, and that's why I'm looking for input, at twelve fifty. So that's gonna double what's allowed now. So you're gonna double the units that are allowed now with this, plus they're gonna do something with some of the, uh, heights of the buildings as well. And, um, it's gonna actually, because the B three, uh, only encompassed a small section of Main Street, and when we go back to the B one, if you look at the B one previous map, it's a lot larger. So it's gonna encompass a lot more properties that are gonna have the opportunity to put high-density residential in those properties as well. So I would love to speak with you about it, um, but we can do that after the meeting. Unfortunately, I don't have an overhead, overhead projector, but I can show you some of the things that I have on here, as well as some of the things on the.
So the.
Jim, I think you have to start from the beginning before saying twenty-five hundred square feet. We started at three hundred and fifty square feet of land that you need to have one dwelling. That was the B three district, and then for some reason in June of last year, it got changed back to twenty-five hundred square feet of land that you need to have one dwelling.
Didn't the three hundred come from a mistake?
And on Main Street. And then now they're trying to put it back to twelve fifty square feet, which is nowhere close to three hundred and fifty square feet.
Yes. Yes.
We shouldn't be anywhere close to three hundred.
Right, I, oh, no, 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 let, let, let me, please. So at three hundred and fifty square feet, at three hundred and fifty square feet.
This is why. Wait a minute, point of order for a second, point, point.
At three hundred and fifty.
Can I just, can I just have a point of order for one second?
Can we actually follow a procedure in the sense of making a motion, a second, and then having a discussion? That's the purpose of this, introducing this tonight, there's nothing to put up on, on the website until we get through tonight, because it could die tonight right here. So the purpose of going through this process is to be able to approve the proposal to the community. We can't do anything unless we approve the proposal, and the proposal can change. But in order to start that process, we need to have a motion, a second, and then a discussion. But the discussion should be on the proposal of putting this forward, not the sustenance of it right now, because the public hasn't been able to get a chance to read it.
The purpose is for the people to understand what they're trying to pass.
The purpose. Miss Guerrero, please don't muddy the waters.
They're trying to pass something that the people don't understand.
Please don't muddy the waters. We have been talking about this for the better half of twelve months.
That's wrong.
We're not trying to pass anything like that. Listen, you're.
And you've been all over the map, the last number you talked about, which was in public, on T V, on the minutes, was twelve fifty. So please, yes, ma'am, it was.
Yeah, I can just add right back there, you said twelve fifty.
Yeah, there was no vote.
Okay, so let's, let's, uh, let's have, what the, everyone that we have to do, we have to get to the local planning board, the county will take a little longer.
You're being a merchant. Yes, and just.
So, e- even though it sounds like a, a distance from now, it's really not, October, the, October the second, we'll have a public hearing.
Tentative.
Tentative right now, if these boards get back to us in time.
Just a point of order as well. Um, these, this local law will be sent to the county and to your zoning, your planning board for comment. Neither has the authority to approve or disapprove.
What comments?
Yeah.
For the village board, that is, it's your decision. October second.
So, do you.
Joe?
Just give. We haven't even gotten.
Got it for you, Jim?
I, I'm not meaning to interrupt, if the people that are low speakers, if they could pick it up a little bit, because we don't have any amplification. Majority will back your candidacy or be set. So, uh.
So you're saying October second?
Yeah.
Tentatively, for a public hearing. So Wednesday.
Uh, okay, I mean, I, I can't be here, but I, I don't need to be here.
I read the resolution. I read the resolution.
We need a motion to introduce.
I understand, introduce this.
Are you here on the ninth?
Yes.
Okay.
Now it's the ninth.
Yep.
You wanna talk about confusing the people?
Well, it's two months away.
I hope everyone heard that, it'll be October ninth, it'll be in the paper, we'll put it on channel twenty-three, we'll end up talking about it in, at our September meeting, so.
Yeah, and October meeting.
And, and the October meeting, and, uh, this'll be, all these pages will be on the website tomorrow. So if we, if we.
Mr. Mayor, will there be any?
It's subject to change, subject to change, these are, this is to get the ball rolling.
Will there be any discussion tonight? Oh, just, will there be any discussion that involves the ball rolling tonight?
Only by the board.
No.
Okay.
Okay. So may I have a motion, uh, for this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Roll call.
Trustee Guerrero?
Yes.
Trustee Remus?
Yay.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee DeSavio?
Yes.
Trustee Denofield?
Yes.
Yes.
It's just an introduction, so you guys can understand.
And, and just so everybody knows, when we go back to this old zoning, uh, map, uh, at three hundred and fifty square feet of lot area, we would need, for the year, if it was a full build-out, eight hundred and one million gallon, eight hundred and one, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, million gallons of water, if we had a full build-out at three hundred and fifty square feet. Hence, we need to look at possibly, that is, remember another guy just said, we just spent seventy-two thousand dollars on sewer. Infrastructure is a big problem here. If we overtax this with this much, mm, water and sewer, we're gonna have a big problem.
I agree with you. We got these too small. That's a wrong one.
I have not, I'm gonna move on, but I'm gonna make one more comment. I have not heard one, you can refresh my memory. I have not heard anyone, from a developer to a person on Main Street, say, say the number three fifty. I don't know where that's coming from. Okay, next on the agenda, next on the agenda is, uh.
It's a number she's been grinding for a year and a half.
Yeah.
It's Greiner Sierra.
We'll have to go.
You, Mr. DeSalvo, Mr. Ramus.
Resolution concerning the violation of property maintenance. So, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have eight property maintenance, which is usually, uh, grass. Is there any, I'm gonna name the, uh, addresses. Is there anyone here from thirty-five Center? Uh, Cedar. Cedar. Anyone here from Twenty-one Snyder? Anyone here from Nine Fort Putnam? Anyone here from Twenty-two Mountain? Forty-nine Fort Putnam. Number one. Forty-nine Fort Putnam, number two. Forty-one Main. Vacant lot on Perry Avenue. Anybody here on the vacant lot on Perry Avenue? Maybe. Okay, at least, may I do one resolution?
Yes.
Okay, these are all property maintenance.
You opened the due process hearing, you asked if anyone was here representing. Let the record reflect that no one is here.
That's right. No one is here representing the owner or representing any of the addresses that I just read. And again, all of this is property maintenance, which is grass usually. Whereas there are longstanding violations of the Village Property Maintenance Law, Chapter one seventy of the Village of Holland Falls, has existed on each property I listed above designated as a tax map, also noted above. Whereas the property owner or owners have been given due notice of said violations and have been directed to correct the violations. And whereas the property owner or owners were given due notice of a public hearing to be held by the Board of Trustees on the fifth of August, twenty twenty-four, at seven P M. To determine whether the violations have been properly remedied and whether to order the corrective action be undertaken by the village to correct said violations at the property owner's cost and expense, be billed, to bill said costs and expense to the property owner and a levy, and to levy against the property. And whereas a public hearing was duly held by the Board of Trustees on the fifth of August, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the owners did not appear, and whereas the owners have taken, not taken any steps to correct the violations, and the violation still exists. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the, of the, is authorized pursuant to Section one seventy-two of the Property Maintenance Law to authorize the village undertake, to remedy such violations at the property's owner's cost and expense. Now therefore, be resolved that the village, its contractor, contractors or agents shall enter upon the property to correct the violations, and that all costs incurred by the village, including administrative, legal, corrective, corrective costs, be charged to the owner, property owner, and that such charge be, be added to the tax bill of the property owner, if not paid within thirty days of notification to the last known address of the property owner as such in the village tax records. I have a motion to set this in place. Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Trusty Guerrero?
Yes.
Trusty Ramus?
Yay.
Trusty Carroll?
Yay.
Trusty DeSalvo?
Yes.
Mayor Denofria?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have a, a resolution to amend, uh, a budget in receipt of fifty thousand dollars from the Division of Criminal Justice grant for Police Fiscal Year twenty-four, twenty-five.
So moved.
I have a second. A second by Trusty Guerrero, all in favor?
Yes.
Close? Motion. May we approve the event form here we have for the La Crosse Clinic for the Boys and Girls, grades three through eight at the Town of Highlands Recreation on Wednesday for six weeks. They have the dates there, from six P M. to seven thirty, and insurance has been given.
Motion.
I have a second.
I'll second it, just with the understanding that we aren't approving the program, we're just approving use of the field.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Next, we have the Holland Falls Fire Department. Okay, so they already had this, their first annual Christmas in July Street Festival. They had it last Saturday. All, this is, they didn't have the insurance at that point, but they, they did before it started, and I just, for reference, uh, they did supply insurance.
Motion.
Um, I don't need a motion, but.
Oh.
Yeah.
Just mentioning, it's passed.
Okay, this is another event form for, uh. So. Where's that for, Jim?
It's for Saturday, August twenty-fourth, Grove Park Field, Softball Field, for kids, fun for kids, Recreation Department.
Proposed date, Friday, August twenty-three, Grove Park Softball Field. On the twenty-fourth of August.
Fun for kids.
Fun for kids.
Posted by the Rec Department there.
Our Rec Department wanted to use Grove Park, which is great, and they get, they have supplied, uh, insurance. So, can we approve that?
And the only difference is, is I think, uh, there's a DJ for this one.
Oh, thank you, any, it, it's the twenty-third, but the range date, the twenty-fourth.
And there's, and there's the DJ.
And there's a DJ.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Close?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, I have an event form here, Back to School Block Party on August thirty-one. Town of Highlands, two fifty-four Main Street. They wanna use, uh, they wanna use the street, uh, Muller Avenue in front of Saint John's AME Zion Church. Motion.
Are the, uh.
Second.
Have to get together with, uh, the chief and John, who's the town, uh. They, they, uh, they did give insurance.
And, uh, I, I just wanna add to the motion, if you can, that we're not gonna charge them for the live music entertainment thing. We can waive that, don't we?
Yes, we can waive the entertainment.
Yeah, this is an event by Tiger King, also by Tiger King.
I'm gonna honor, I think, one of our places.
Yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion to allow this?
Yeah.
Motion. Motion.
Second by me.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion, motion carries. Christmas in July, kids event, AME Zion. Okay, uh, approve the Hudson Valley Investment Advisors, Inc., as an additional depository for the Village of Holland Falls.
Yeah, just a little update, um, just to answer some questions. This has nothing to do with, uh, the meter money and putting it through a machine that I believe we used to do with TD Bank. Um, and I've been on the board for some time, I don't remember ever hearing anything about funds being lost or something in regards to that particular endeavor. Um, right now, we have our, uh, the, some of our savings for some of our reserve accounts with a company called NY Class. NY Class is a financial firm that's out of, they're based out of, uh, I believe, Saint Louis. Or Louisiana, actually. So, uh, some municipalities do use them, um, but, uh, these folks, Hudson Valley Investors, are an Orange County-based, uh, organization. Uh, their rates are a little better than NY Class, and I think it would be foolish of us to at least add them on as a depository. Does not necessarily mean we will use them, but, um, I think we could do much better with some of our savings accounts, and we could ride this insurance wave a little longer and perhaps generate some additional, uh, unanticipated revenue so that we can offset some expenses as the year goes through. Um, if the board doesn't wanna do that, that's perfectly their prerogative. Um, again, it's, it would, we would follow the normal procurement policy, we're not investing in the stock market. Uh, we can't per our investment policy, as everyone knows, the stock market went down a thousand points. Today, we don't have to worry about that. Uh, this is, would be strictly short-term treasuries, CDs, stuff that we're doing right now. So, and money markets. So, uh, I would highly recommend that we at least try to engage them, and in order to do so, we have to approve them as a depository. Um, and like I said, right now, on their thirty days, sixty day, and ninety days, they're beating NY Class by a little bit, and they're a tax-paying organization in Orange County, so I think it might behoove us to use folks who are local.
Uh, so does it cost us anything to transfer funds over to NY Class to them?
No.
Okay, and they have higher rates than NY Class?
Yes.
So, there is no downside to going to a different depository?
No, and, and I don't know that we would necessarily move everything out of NY Class. We might just wanna keep some there just to keep an account open, but, um, you know, it's, like I said, it's, it's, it's an Orange County-based firm, they're, they're a legit company, they've been in business for some time.
So, this is a group who approached us and just said, you know, we may have better rates for you, so consider us.
Well, they, they work with, they work with one of our current depositories, uh, which is Orange Banking Trust, and, uh, we have been, the treasurer and clerk and myself, who all been searching to get better rates, and we've been trying to beat up the depository banks that we do have, do business with now, and, uh, some of them have been receptive, some of them have not. And for those who have not, I'd like to see us move the money into something that makes us a little more interest. So, I would highly recommend that we put them on at least as a depository. Again, does not necessarily mean we'll use them.
If there's no downside, this is what it is about, you have more choices, just like having an older senior group. You have more choices, it's not a competition, you choose what's better. So, if there's no downside, why not?
Okay, do I have a motion, uh, that, uh, adding Hudson Valley Investment Advisors as an additional depository? I have a motion.
Are you making that motion, Trusty Guerrero?
Yes.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. We have a memo from the chief to approve, uh, Mr. Torres to the position of a part-time dispatcher at a rate of eighteen dollars and fifty cents per hour, I'm sorry. She has successfully completed background investigation and possesses dispatching experience. May I have a motion to every hire of this person?
So moved.
Motion by Jim DeSalvo, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, by Peter Carroll, all in favor?
Yes.
Close? Motion carries. May we approve the completion of twenty-six weeks probation of Emmanuel Vasquez, probation status be removed and he be made permanent in the position of police sergeant. This was a great hire. So, he's completed his twenty-six weeks, and the chief is asking him to be taken off probation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Close? Motion carries. We have a request from the treasurer to attend the annual Fall twenty twenty-four NITE Con Conference from September the sixteenth through September the thirtieth. The cost to attend is five hundred and ten dollars, lodging is a hundred and ninety-nine dollars per night, reimbursement for meals and mileage per employee travel expenses, guidelines. May I, this would be good for her to go, she's new, and this would be good. NITE Con puts on wonderful programs.
Are we doing it for both?
Well, the other one's a different way. Let's just do one at a time.
Okay, yeah, so moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Next, we have our clerk, uh, welcome, uh, tonight, um, Heidi Johnson to attend the annual Fall twenty twenty-four NITE Con Conference from September sixteenth through September twentieth, same dates as the, as the treasurer. The cost to attend is four hundred and fifty dollars, plus full dinner package at two ninety-eight, with a total registration fee of seven forty-eight. Lodging is one ninety-nine, which is the same per night, reimbursement is the same meals and mileage covered by our, uh, guidelines.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Pete Carroll, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Close? Motion carries. Next, we have a memo, um, from, uh, Street Superintendent. Recommending, uh, Michael Jones be moved from laborer to maintenance worker. Have a motion.
Can I ask something? How long has Michael Jones been with us?
Nineteen twenty years.
Is that right? Okay, so I think the only problem I have with this is that John Jones is his brother. So, he's being supervised by his brother, is being asked to be recommended for a promotion by his brother. Isn't there some kind of code that you can't do that? I'm not opposed to him being promoted, but maybe we should do it the right way? Uh, who's the DPW liaison? Maybe you should recommend him instead of his brother recommending?
That, that's fine, I just.
His own brother, it just.
Just so the, just so the board knows and the, and the public knows that we have a couple positions open, uh, there is two maintenance worker positions open in the DPW and now one potentially in, uh, Sewer. We have to offer, per, per the contract with the Employee Association, you have to, you have to introduce it inside, in-house first. And Mr. Jones, being the only laborer we have, is the only one eligible to move forward, uh, in-house as a maintenance worker. So, he's, he, you know, he, he's it. He's the DPW right now, along with.
So, what, can you, can you, can you do it then? Can you say that you're recommending that he be promoted?
Sure, sure, absolutely, I can say that. Because Michael Jones is the only village employee on the DPW that would be eligible to be promoted to maintenance worker, I recommend that we promote him to Public Works Maintenance Worker.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Next, we have a license agreement for three Graziano Lane. Uh, I'm sure that all of you know, that's the wall that came down above West Street. It's been down for quite a while, much too long. There's a new owner for that property, and, uh, um, I don't have the paperwork.
You may move on.
Contrary.
It attached itself to the.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, this is a license agreement allowing the new owner of the property to fix the wall. Um, um, he needs to come out a couple of inches. If you know where the wall was, there's really no sidewalk there, it's like that wide. And he needs just to come out a couple of inches, uh, to set the footings for the wall. And this is, uh, our, our village engineer. First of all, our village attorney has looked at all the paperwork. Todd, our engineer, has looked at the drawings, uh, professional drawings, and, um, and is fine with what his, what he's asking for. So, this would be an agreement that I would sign, along with the owner of the property, so we can get this thing up hopefully before winter. May I have a motion to? May I have a motion to, um.
So moved.
Second.
Sign the license agreement for three Graziano Lane. All in favor?
Yes.
You seen, you seen that wall, is he gonna go on that existing curb that's there now? Or you don't know?
No.
No.
Okay. I mean, there hasn't been a sidewalk there forever.
No, yeah, it's just, it's just.
It's crap.
It's just a, but.
It's a dog park.
It's a curb.
Okay, thank you. All right, I have a letter here from John Walter, uh, uh, resigning his position with the village at the wastewater treatment plant. May I have a motion? I don't really need a motion, but that's what we do, so.
Discussion. So, do you wanna make a motion before I do a discussion?
Well, if, I, I would make a motion, but if we're gonna discuss an employee, we should probably go into a position.
No, I think it's already out in the public, everybody knows about it.
Employee matter should only be discussed in executive session.
So, this is a village employee, okay, that is asking us to, uh, for resignation, okay? The village employee is related to the mayor, and that he should not be given the option to resign after being caught stealing.
All right, I'm telling you right now, this is not a discussion with the public.
Okay? He was not admitted to.
We're gonna get, my thing, my thing is gonna happen, there's gonna be a lawsuit.
He did not, oh, yes.
Mayor, mayor?
He said, he should, he should.
Mayor.
Okay, he admitted to it.
I have a motion to go into a second session, and, uh, do I have a second? Be second, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Either the she, either the she.
I appreciate the peanut gallery thing, Bob.
You would know, Pat, you are the peanut gallery.
Yes, get her calm down. Close. Okay, so let me, let's continue the meeting, we can add, except for session, we're back into the regular meeting. I accept the resignation of John Walter, uh, as, read his letter. Upon the letter, upon this letter, I resign my position in the Village of Holland Falls Wastewater Treatment Plant as a maintenance worker. I also relinquish all of my, all my port town, John Walter. So, I accept. Okay, next on the agenda, public comment. Yes.
Michael Joyce, member of the village. At the last meeting, I always know.
You don't have to, I hear you, at the last meeting.
No, no, no.
No, no, bye.
That's the record, I do.
I'm, I'm.
I can speak up, please.
At the last meeting, I asked you directly, was there a problem with the team? You said, no. Week later, your comments in the newspaper suggesting that FEMA money was held up because of a member on the board writing letters. You know, there's an old Irish saying, don't point a finger at somebody because there's four pointing back at you. You admitted to stealing from the village. Do you not think that the government has the money, the manpower to look into previous history to watch for any discrepancies? You knew there was an investigation going on. Because if the money got held up in government matters, it follows with an investigation. You lied to this community.
No, I didn't.
You lied to people that were counting on that money.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
And you tried to point the finger, which is even worse, because you didn't wanna take responsibility yourself.
I see you pointing your finger right now. Let me answer this.
And the four pointing back at me, and I'll take it.
Let me, let me-
No, 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 let me finish my comment.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
You tried to deflect by mentioning somebody else on this board. You have a history-
Did I mention somebody?
And you admitted to it. Don't, don't lie to these people. These are hardworking people. They pay their taxes. Don't rob from these people.
Okay, let me answer a couple things, you know, best I can. I still, nor does this board know if there's anything that has been done wrong. I know that this month, the meetings are starting up in this room. That's where we have them every Friday, so that's a good sign. Also, while I know you can't see the wording, but each one of these blocks is a step that FEMA requires be done from showing them a project, getting surveys, whatever's required, each one of these steps have to be, by the federal government and the state government, have to be checked off before FEMA reimburses. And FEMA's been reimbursing. We have over two million dollars that's been reimbursed. We have three million dollars approximately that we've spent, but we have a million dollars from the insurance company. So it's kinda even, you know, kind of evening out. But nothing would get approved until all these steps were taken. If I said that wall came down on Highland Brook and needs to be put back up FEMA, FEMA would say, where's the survey? Then they would approve or not approve. So that's number one. Number, number two, I stand by the article, which is here, that was in last week's News in Highlands. We know that FEMA has received several phone calls and they're speaking about putting a cease and desist on the person because they're being bothered so much by phone calls. We know that phone calls were made. Politics is a rough game. We know that the New York State Comptroller's Office was contacted several times, not a few times, but several times. We know that they came down here to do FEMA cease and desist. We know that the comptroller came down from orbiting because of calls that were made to look at bills and claims and nothing. Nothing was found. Nothing was found that was related to FEMA, nothing. Well, that wasn't good enough when that, when that information was found out and reported, they kept making more phone calls. So then the Department of Investigation, investigator, looked at everything. On May sixth, May the sixth, twenty twenty-four, this investigator found nothing. All this wasted time. All this wasted time. And I'm gonna tell you something, here's where the taxpayer is gonna come, have an issue. The state has in their budget money that they're putting towards our twenty-five percent. Our twenty-five percent, the village taxpayers, including me, that we have to pay on any given project. They lowered it to twelve and a half percent, which is good for us. But when that money runs out, it'll go back up to twenty-five percent. And who's gonna pick up those millions of dollars of more of us that we have to pay because of these delays? Everyone in this room, including us. So there, there's some situations here that are gonna come out, it just is not gonna look good. The auditor has found nothing. He's been down twice. Twice and found nothing. Weeks and weeks and, yeah, two months. He just left, left last week. So yes, phone calls are being made, you know, people, this is a rough game, man, this is a rough game. So that's all I can answer you. Do I know that there's something wrong? No. And last week, tell you what, Monday last week, I wrote, this is a copy of an email to Congressman Ryan, State Senator Scoofus, and Assemblyman Echus. I won't read it because it's boring, but I'm asking them for help to find out what is wrong. Can you help us? If you didn't cross a T and dot an I, tell me. I don't even know if it's that.
I hope, I hope-
No, it's my turn, it's my turn, it's my turn, thank you very much.
That are valid and not being overpriced.
So, that's, that's a, but I can tell you, and as I, as I have-
If there's a paper trail-
If I have more updates, I will always give them to you. I will always give them to you. You know, I will always give them to you. So that's the update on FEMA. That's the update on FEMA, okay. Other public comments? Yes?
Hi, Dan Bredon, President of the House of Commons, Chairman of the Congress. I just wanted to find out, why is it, or maybe we haven't disclosed it yet, that we're not back on topic for the comprehensive planning meetings? So we can get that done, because when I go to local town and planning zoning board meetings, the question, we're there too, why haven't we moved on?
We, we, before we talked about it?
Um, we haven't talked about, they haven't heard anything yet from the village on what's been, what's been not approved.
I'm sorry, who?
The town and planning board zoning board meetings, the people-
The consolidated-
Yeah, they just wanna know what's on status.
Well, we're sending them, that came up in-
We moved on a bunch of stuff at the beginning of the time.
Okay, but we didn't, so is the public not, like, I thought we were having a bunch of meetings to discuss, like, things like square footage, right?
That's what this is, that's what we want.
All we did was introduce it to have the public hear it.
For today.
No, no, we just introduced it tomorrow or-
To present it.
In a day or two, you can go on the village website and pull this document up.
That's fine, and I wanted to find out about a policy, because that's okay, I'll look on the website. Um, I wanted to find out about making sure that this board has a policy in place for anything that's going on with village property. It's not just one way or another way. And the reason why I'm asking that, because I'm pretty sure you all, we have read my emails by now, which was over ten, ten days, fourteen days ago, that when we do memorials, I was told we don't need a facilities request form and we don't need insurance. We already held two memorials in town for people that recently passed. Then there was a third memorial coming up and I was told ten days before the event that things have changed. Obviously, that has changed later, a couple of days before the event, that no, we in fact do not need facilities request form, insurance for a memorial, because it was a short one. I'm just saying for this board to please put in place a policy so going forward, people won't have to have the stress, the undue stress and disrespect that comes when they're told you should have done this or that, but you've been asking, what would you like me to do if you said, we don't need to do that?
You want a policy on events.
So for anything, Joe, anything. And the third thing I would like to bring up is, I understand that it might be common in this community, as long as we lived here ten years, for the board, the people here, to go back and forth and bicker and argue, you know? That's what you guys are used to, I'm not used to that. So when I try to call back a member of the board, when they told me to call them back and then they yell and scream at me, not because of what I did, but because someone else is pissing them off and I'm getting the grunt of that, when I'm calling on something official, nothing personal, which I don't call anyone here for anything personal, it's always, hey Jimmy, can you find out about this and I'll send you that? Or I ask care or a question. Same thing, Jim, when we talk privately about certain things, it's all business, it's nothing personal. So I'm just wondering, you know, there's, you guys have to take a step back and figure out, you have to start having respect for the community because you guys essentially work for the community. You, you're, you're our, you're our leaders, we elected you to represent us. You go out into the world, people see this on YouTube, and you think they think the people in the town of Highlands, in the village, are, are, are people that understand respect and hold meetings properly? No, because everybody's yelling and screaming and upset, and yeah, I know, we get out of hand too. The public gets out of the hand, the village reacts. I just think that you guys really, and I know I've said this many times to you guys, take a look at this, because I never speak to anyone disrespectfully, Joe, and the way that you spoke to me that day, it was very disrespectful and very hurtful. And I'm only trying to do and accomplish certain things.
Sure.
That's all, so thank you very much.
Okay. Hi, Edward Dunn, Revolutionary Road, Highland Falls, New York. I've been in town for many, many years. I am also a member of the planning board. So one is a question, did you receive our comment letter that we had sent you?
A while back, yeah.
Yeah, we just sent it after last name Klein. And could I implore you, please, send five copies of this resolution to me, uh, coming out, down to the town hall, so we can get them in our mailbox and we can review them before the meeting? And that would expedite-
And the zoning. Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be down here tomorrow.
No disrespect, but the website sucks. You can't get the latest copy of the comprehensive plan, it says so in there. When I try to open it, it doesn't open up, I can't print it out. How am I supposed to read it if I can't even get? All right, so members taking care of this website, perhaps they could pay a little bit better attention.
Back to you. Anyone else?
Mr. Man.
Oh, sorry. Next.
I wanna talk about zoning, zoning plan. Six months I came in here and I said that that, that unit, whatever it's twenty-five hundred, twelve hundred, is a ridiculous number. It shouldn't even have been considered. And I said, please educate yourselves on this square footage per unit. When I hear that we're gonna go from twenty-five hundred to twelve hundred, I can see that nobody educated themselves, okay? The, the number has nothing to do with anything that we do in this community. Mrs. Guerrero was upset that we paid a professional sixty-five thousand dollars to make recommendations on our master plan. He said we should abolish that. It means nothing, because we have a footprint and we have a height. Obviously, nobody took that into consideration. Because if Marquesi sells a car, puts one of these little small cars in for a million dollars, they would sell zero. If they cut it to a half a million, they would sell zero. So that's where we're at, guys, that's why nobody's in this community. Because we keep looking at a ridiculous number suggesting that it means something. It means nothing. If you cut twenty-five hundred to twelve hundred, it still means nothing. We also spoke about thirty-five feet for the residential. Now I understand you're looking at forty feet for commercial. At that time, I said forty feet was ridiculous, thirty-five feet was ridiculous, and went back to forty feet. We added five feet to a residential house and said, that's our commercial footprint. Joe, I mean, you guys have to educate yourselves. We pay you zero, very small money, but we need you to educate yourselves. Nobody's building commercial buildings at forty feet. So why is it even in this resolution? I don't understand. I, I don't know where we're getting to the next step. Our planning board made recommendations for you and it's not even laid out in this plan. We need you to educate yourselves on this ridiculous twenty-five hundred, fifteen hundred. Number one, Mr. Ramis, nobody's building high density, please don't use the high density. It suggests that somebody's gonna build two hundred or three hundred units on a, on a postage stamp, that's not the case. Maybe in the Bronx, not here. Okay, so we can't use high density, we can't use high rises, but we can't, nobody's gonna come here for a forty-foot-high commercial building. We need to get four stories in, we need to get buildings, we have buildings that are three, we need to add one more. We need to make it attractive for developers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Biggest purpose when I, when I bring up comments is just to make sure things are in the right column. That's my biggest thing. Things are being taken by the right group, by, they're being paid for out of the right account. It's, it's mostly that. First of all, majority of you in the back cannot hear at least half of the speakers that are facing the board. Let alone one or two of the board members that don't talk that loud, which you shouldn't have do. When we have a perfectly good sound system, access to channel twenty-three, and handicap accessibility in the town, we have, we have this banner up forever in the back of Village Hall, one community, we're all working together. If that's the case, why aren't we having these meetings, which is a bigger role in the village, with handicap accessibility, the audio already in, and the TV? We have meetings opposite the town, so that shouldn't be an issue, we've had it in the past, we've had village meetings in the town hall before. So that to me, it doesn't, it doesn't seem right. I would ask a question that, I know that we have extra stuff on this side of the building, which is not seniors. It's, it's a garden and before I'm accused of being a bad person, I have, my own son is on the spectrum, my wife and I do a bunch of stuff with people on the spectrum. But again, being in the right column on a regular, people are being yelled at that only seniors can use the building, only seniors can do this. Most other communities, blood drives, all kinds of different activities happen in senior cycle. So we've got, that mentality's gotta be done. Do I have a problem with the gardener here? No way. It's a beautiful garden, it should be used properly, but that also means the building needs to be used properly. First and foremost, seniors, and yes, according to the agreement, this is a senior center only. That doesn't mean only seniors can walk through the door. Because we have several here at a village board meeting, which is not a senior board meeting. All it has to be checking with the county is senior sponsor, you have a senior at the end of your table. That is all it needs to be. So that, and lastly, not that, hopefully lastly, the insurance. I did check with six communities and two municipal carriers about the insurance. Just so we're aware, for those that didn't talk to the insurance company. No, groups do not need extra insurance, it is a fact. You have to word it properly or they will give you the wrong answer. Do groups need additional insurance? No, but everybody should have additional insurance. That's coming from an insurance carrier. They want you to get more insurance. If everybody had their own insurance for every function, they would never have to pay out because all these policies would be done. Someone mentioned, well, parades, we don't need additional insurance for parades. We don't even need additional insurance for fireworks. I checked with our carrier. We cover fireworks. If there was an issue, I can see, hey, we had an issue the other year, we gotta make sure we're covered, extra insurance. My biggest problem is we're spending tax dollars on a policy that's already way inflated because of one or two issues. Two hundred thousand dollars on insurance per year, way up there. But my bigger concern is the fact that you're forcing small groups, not just the senior group, but most of everyone that's here, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, for one event. Eight hundred, eight hundred dollars for one event. They don't have that money, that- They don't have that money. That eight hundred dollars means that eight hundred dollars does not go to the fundraising they're trying to do. Or the events for kids. We are still a small community. I would just ask that every board member be educated in what is exactly represented and then report back to the community. So you know what? We don't need the insurance, but, and this is what the, they said, if the board decides, no, no, we do need insurance. We wanna be more covered. That is legal. And that is the way it is. And we can say nothing about it. But the question is, if we've never had an issue with parades, why is there extra insurance? If we've never had an issue with this, why is there extra insurance? Huge policy delay. That's it. Thank you.
I just wanna clarify this. The garden out here is not just for special needs. It's for adults with disabilities. It's for senior citizens. And even though it's for senior citizens too, Community Connections has their own insurance. That in your notebook.
Alright, we're gonna go on to some of the reports. Yeah.
Go ahead. Just a couple of questions. Um, the firecracker five K, um, where do the money that's collected from that, what does that go to?
You have to ask them, the people that put it on. It has nothing to do with Fourth of July.
Okay. Um, my kids do a lot of five Ks and they always have it specified on the, you know, the sign up page of what everything goes to. And that's not done here, so just a recommendation for future.
Yeah, we don't, we don't run that.
Okay.
Yeah, they usually make a donation to the Fourth of July committee, but they, it's their own, it's their own project. It's not linked to another organization.
The, uh, you said that there were violations for property maintenance throughout the village, that there were only eight of them. Is there a reason why that list was so small?
I know there's more than eight. Where that comes from is the building department. So Phil, Phil sees that. Now, there's things that I turn, there's addresses that I give Phil that maybe he doesn't see and I'm sure there's a couple on there tonight that I gave him, but.
Um, and.
And you're right, there's more than eight.
Well, I, I know too that, um, you know, I mean, we should be able to write violations for people leaving their garbage cans on the sidewalks, like indefinitely.
There's a lot of those, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, just recently, I've been walking around a little bit more and, you know, to see people in the community stumbling on the curbs, getting into the street, to walk around garbage can when there's twelve along one street all the time, it's, it's really.
The garbage can, it's just, just to say about the garbage, the code on the book is they're supposed to be brought in five PM, day of pickup.
No one does that.
I do. I don't know how. There's people around me that don't do.
So how would we enforce it?
Building department.
So who's at the building depart- department saying, hey, we need more on this?
Uh, Trusty Guerrero is the liaison, but it's Phil Allen.
So this is what I would say, Alina. If you're seeing a lot of, uh, of your neighbors not doing it, or not even your neighbors, it has to be reported with the building department and then we can take action. We can't just, the building department, which belongs to the town, boss here, right? They can't just randomly go up to people and say, you know, and correct them. It's, it's a lot of work, number one, okay? And it also has to be enforced. So what you saw tonight, for example, the building department will say, okay, these are these eight people whose yards look terrible, okay? And they'll give them a notice of violation. But it's still up to the village board to actually do something about it. It's not going to say, I am going to put you in jail, okay? Or I am going to take money from you. The board has to get that and then the board has to do something about it. So it's not just him.
No, I.
And, uh, other people, if you're saying, if you say, for, for example, my neighbor has like ten people living in there and it's supposed to be a single family home, you have to go to the building department and report it and then we are able to actually enter the house. But we can't just let go into somebody's house and say, hey, there's too many people living in it.
Like, hell, I don't have to go inside anywhere to see the ridiculous number of garbage cans that are out. I mean, if every single thing has to be reported, then how do we maintain anything?
I would just.
And you have a building department of one person with a secretary. So yes, we have, we're busy. We're, it's, it's not setting around.
Oh, I know that. I know that.
I, I guess what I would.
Yeah, it needs to be enforced, you're right.
Just add to that or maybe tweak a little bit is that, I don't think it's necessary that you call on your specific neighbor. If I was me.
It's the whole village.
Hold on a second. I, I, let me just give you my two cents and we can go wherever with that. I, I would recommend that if you think you see something, Phil is very open door policy, mention it to him. He is one person. They do work in that office. He does as, as best as he can to take care of the issues that we have. But if you happen to see something on your street, I would say, hey, take a ride down Acme Avenue and I'm sure you'll see X, Y, Z. That way it doesn't turn into a competitive situation where you're calling on your neighbor. So you, we can all try to be neighborly. Uh, in some situations, they may be elderly. They can't bring the can in, or they may need help. So I, I'm not saying that that's the case, but I'm saying it's a possibility. You know, and then as we get more and more investors, as we come up with these great laws that we're gonna tweak as we go through the process and we get more people to build more things, there's gonna be more garbage cans. And then probably we'll need more people in that department and we'll have more people write violations.
And Alina, I do agree. We need a bigger, stronger building department, more manned, but we also need help enforcing the rules. It's hard to enforce the rules when, and I think the police can help us with that, you know? Even people who are just walking down the street, letting their dogs poo on the sidewalk, right? I, I mean, we need help actually saying, listen, pick it up or we're gonna fine you. So enforcing it is very difficult, but I agree with you. And the place needs to be cleaned up.
My only suggestion would be, some people can probably call the building department, but you could always send, uh, the business, or his liaison to the building department. If you sent her an email or you gave her a phone call, she could, you know, get touches built as well.
Okay. Um, I feel like we kinda, you know, I feel like we're lacking in several different areas. I mean, the fact that we don't have what we need in order to do property enforcement. Um, it was also said tonight that there's only two people in the DPW. We've got John and his brother. Where are we, where are we, what are we doing that we end up in a position where we are understaffed all over the place? Or?
Well, you, li- li- listen, you want an answer to that?
Please.
Okay. So you go through, you go through a few years of turmoil, you go through a dissolution, you go through, uh, driving, uh, and, and saying how, how horrible things are here, and you don't get to attract tho- that talent. So now we are in the process of getting through all that. We've actually rebuilt the police department. We're in the process now of doing the DPW. And when I say it's not the entire DPW, we do have a mechanic down there, but the DPW, the actual folks who go out and fill the potholes, I mean technically, our staff for the, for to do auto mechanics should be out there helping, but he does assist. So we had one, we had a couple fellows, we have a couple part timers, and now we are trying to fill. We got a bunch of applications, so I would asse- I would probably assume within the next meeting, we're probably gonna hire some more folks.
A couple of meetings lately have been canceled. Was there a main driving point of what's been canceled? You canceled with one meeting in July, another meeting already coming up in August. There was a special meeting that was announced in the newspaper and then it was canceled the day of. We had a comprehensive plan meeting that everybody showed up here for that was also canceled.
There was a meeting we had, we were scheduled, uh, the last been canceled. Was it the con plan?
It said spec.
And then usually during the summer, we have, you know, people don't, we don't get a full ten on.
Yeah, we, um, I, I can't say every year, but there's a lot of years where the second meeting in July and second meeting in August was canceled. We don't show up, but when you have money, we have.
Um, the geese that we paid a whole bunch of money for, to get rid of the geese.
Twice as many.
What's the follow-up procedure on that?
We have a call into the company. We're waiting to hear back from them and then we'll probably have to deal with it again. I don't know that we'll have the same cost again, but, uh, apparently, you know, there's different type of geese. Some like to come make a home, some, some are migrant. I don't wanna know any more about geese than I do now already. To be honest with you, if it was up to me, I'd probably go up there and I could probably take care of them in a couple hours. But unfortunately, we have to do it the right way, in humane way. So we're in the process of talking to the company that we had here. Come, come here. And the, the initial conversation was that, that these are technically migrant geese. So they're just here for a little bit and then they'll move on. I don't know. I'm not tracking them. But I'm becoming more and more schooled in the, in the, in the philosophy of geese and I, more than I probably want to. So we'll have an update for you.
How many did you see outside of there?
Like sixty.
Yeah.
I counted the same.
I counted, yeah.
Yep.
Actually, did you count the ones?
Only here.
I really, I really don't care for the presence of the geese. I mean, it's a park. You kinda wanna see geese. Everybody's happy to see the little ducklings, you know, in the spring, but then we're mad about the poop and the.
If they stayed on the lake and around the lake, I'd be fine with it too.
Well, where are all for our kids? I mean, when my kids were little, they would run through the field and they'd go to the other side and it was not that big of a deal. And actually, um, my husband did the landscaping. He did the landscaping accounts for the village for, um, a period of time, years ago now. But when he was in charge of taking care of the, uh, the village properties, he blew off the park everywhere. So he cleaned that. You were paying him to do the landscaping work around the park area, so that was part of the job. So maybe instead of adding an additional charge to paying three thousand dollars for some other company to come and get rid of geese, we make our, uh, people that we're already paying hold up to what they're contracted to do.
Yeah, I, it's, it's cleaned off daily or every other day. So we had a little break for a couple weeks, but unfortunately they came back.
Well, my general concern is really just for the condition of the village. I just feel like we're looking pretty shaggy all around. Um, and I think we need a little bit more from everybody, from the board here, from our DPW, from the police. We've gotta step it up a little bit to clean up this place because people are clearly not wanting to work here right now and people really aren't wanting to live here right now. So, um.
We got twenty-seven applications, so some people aren't working.
Okay, well, we have over twenty empty apartments in the village as well.
What's that?
I said we have twenty empty apartments in the village as well that are not renting because people don't wanna live here right now. But I mean, look around. You can see why. I mean, our main street is quieter than it's ever been. Our neighborhoods and our houses are more unkept than ever.
I'm not gonna disagree with you. I mean, those are some opinions. I, I will also tell you, if you ask any realtor in town, houses sell in days. So I, look, I, yes, we have work to do. It's always, we're always gonna have work to do. It's never gonna be perfect, perfect. So I agree with what some of what you're saying, but I don't, you know, it's not all, it's not all gloom and doom. There is a little light at the end of the tunnel. If you had a piece of real estate and you put it for sale, I guarantee you'd sell it. It'd sell in a week. Those houses sell in days, days, two days. There was one right on Main Street, beautiful house, sold in two days. So I hope more people come rent. I hope all your apartments get rented.
Since the, you know, the comment was that nobody wants to work here. If, if a village employee publicly resigned because of workplace violence or harassment in the workplace, was that ever resolved?
You can't comment on that.
I don't, I'm not sure of that.
There are no lawsuits against the village that I'm aware of yet.
Yeah, but who, who regulates if, if somebody is in charge of people? Who's in charge of him to say that, yes, that was workplace violence or, yes, that was harassment? Is it you? Because if it is you, then, then.
If someone has.
Then we'll never be wrong.
If, if someone has a workplace harassment, that, um, that is a nineteen eighty-three or discrimination type claim and they would go to court. So, so it's not something that this board decides. It's, it's a matter of the, for the court.
She resigned pub- with a public letter.
I don't know that she.
And, and no one, no one in the village is gonna recog-. No one in the village is gonna recognize.
There are no lawsuits against the village. I don't know what else. I don't know how to state that.
To be in that position?
I, I don't know how to answer.
Is that a good question as to why nobody wants to work here?
Those aren't, those aren't, those are okay questions, but.
Because, because, because the meeting that immediately followed the public resignation of this person, the person in question didn't come to the meeting. You weren't at the meeting. Jim DeSaville ran the meeting that week when I, when.
Well, he was sick. I mean, like, a meeting a few ago.
Some more. I mean, I mean, yeah, he's allowed to be sick.
Trusty Guerrero missed the meeting, I missed the meeting, everybody missed the meeting.
But the rest of the board, he's, he's just a member. You guys can't vote to say, all this lady's, it's not like she was underqualified. It's not like she was, no, no one else witnessed this? There's not, like, like you said earlier, there's, there's cameras in the village. If my mom was harassed at her job and made to feel some type of way at her job, I would want somebody to.
I, I wish I could answer you. Maybe someday I will. I can't now, sitting here. Maybe, maybe I will soon.
You don't have to speak on that, but who regulates, who regulates that?
I'll say this. If there was an employee in the village and if there was an employee in village hall or any village employee that wanted to contact our labor attorney for any type of issues that they felt that they thought they had, they have that ability. And not only after that, but they seek that counsel, they can also seek private counsel. I mean, that's, that's the normal procedure.
But if it's being publicly brought to you as village board members, how do you sit with that person?
I understand that, but that.
You can't like vote them out? Or, I, I don't understand how, how he can run a village.
There's no mechanism to vote any board member out.
The only one to remove the mayor is the governor.
The only, the only person that can remove any board, the only person that can remove any elected official, okay? In the state of New York, is the governor of the state of New York.
Okay, so as village board members to taxpayers, why aren't you guys writing a letter? Because obviously there's cameras in the building, even if it doesn't have audio, body language, this and that. There has to be proof somewhere. Lady doesn't, doesn't have, she's not highly qualified for no reason.
Or not.
She didn't come to, nope. And, okay, and my other.
The only issue is, is like, there's the same issue that we just had five minutes ago that made us go into executive session. Like, we get into a point where we're walking on the line to be in executive session for an employee matter. I understand the letter was read. I understand, like, we tried to have the letter read tonight and then we try to add our, whatever we wanna add to it.
I'm, I'm not asking for the, the.
Hold on a second. I just wanna try to give you an answer. I'm not, like me, don't like me, I'm just trying to give you an answer. If that particular person wanted the board to do some kind of action, then we'd have to request it. It'd be a simple request. They could go to a liaison and go to anybody. Go to any board member anytime.
But wouldn't the village want?
No, protect who they wanna protect.
There's no protecting of anything.
And tonight is a prime example.
And also, how is some, how is somebody that the village pays allowed to be disrespectful to, to people that got voted in to, to where you guys are sitting?
Yeah, everybody saw that, right? She came up to me and said, shut up.
And she makes comments to certain people every time. Every time Mr. Polito steps up here, she has a rude comment to make. Every time certain people that doesn't agree with what she's talking about, and it, and like you guys have said, this is on camera.
I disagree with some of that.
Of course you're gonna, because you are usually.
I can't answer. I cannot answer. You cannot.
Of course you're not gonna agree. Workplace violence is your thing.
I have one more. You can hear up.
No, I'm not, I'm not done.
You're not done yet? Go ahead.
I mean, it was done, but I mean, you're just cutting somebody off that came up to speak. I'm just trying to get some answers.
Who, I, do you, do you want to speak today?
Yeah, I want to build on, uh, if you don't mind me, go first. I wanna build on this, so Olivier's, uh, uh, comment about the, the garbage problem in town.
Yeah.
Uh, I live on Perry Avenue, Rod Malachi. Um, a car hit an animal on Perry and it squished it. I went over to take a look at it. It's a rat. Now, now, that's, that's big time city stuff, not little village stuff. Now, it's a garbage problem. There's plenty of people using plastic bags to put their garbage in. Uh, if they need more bins, I'm sure the town will give more, uh, bins for that, but it's, uh, it's a problem. Maybe the park restaurant and shades are closed now and the rats don't have, uh, uh, a restaurant to go to anymore. But, uh, I've, none of us in the village.
But, uh, I've, none of us in the village in the north end want this problem going up the hill, and I'm sure you don't. I'd also make a comment about Mountain Avenue.
Wait a minute, what, what'd you, what, I don't want?
Uh, you don't want that, the rat problem going up the hill to your house, I'm sure.
We got it ours.
Who, who would that...
You got, you got, you got to... A Mountain Avenue, there's two ways into the village.
The rats down to south, and the motormen up in the north end. You guys, you guys have good...
We got good stuff right there.
Uh, there's two ways in the village, South Main Street and Mountain Avenue. Mountain Avenue looks, looks terrible, I, it's, it's filled with weeds, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, uh, I, I've, I've been in Fort Montgomery and seen a, a town employee, I believe, uh, you know, killing the weeds on the sidewalk. I mean, maybe one of our DPDW guys can...
Well, one of them went actually, we sent to the school to get that license, so that it, when he does it, it's legal, but yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I'm gonna try to end this, so I'm gonna take you and...
I wanted to ask, we've been having water leaks or something, in the last two weeks, we've been getting dirty water, left and right, dirty waters, dirty water, dirty water, dirty water. Is anything wrong with the water department? They don't know how to run it? And the second thing is, when you guys brought that big company to the here, the water department, one of the claws where they were going to pay in the big tanks, trying to remember correctly, when they want to do it?
No, that I don't know, no.
Uh, it is so...
No.
Oh, you should, no. You're saying, you're saying this company was gonna pay, no.
I want to dig into the...
Yeah, dig into it, dig into it.
It is...
Uh, Mr. Bear, a few things, one is related to Mountain Avenue, uh, there's, on the top of Mountain Avenue and down by the school, there's, uh, a, a resident that allows, uh, parking on his front lawn, it's against the law to park on your front lawn. Some of them have old boats and, uh, old jet skis on that front lawn as you come down the hill, that's our entrance to the village. Um, and then there's a gentleman down the street, nice guy, right up from the school, sometimes he's got four cars parked on his front lawn. Just think about how Mountain Avenue would look if everybody parked on the front lawn. Details matter, details matter, details matter. Sidewalks, if you can use some of that grant to extend the sidewalks, maybe down to Norman's, uh, Pellwood Lake, that would be, uh, great.
Thank you. Richie Sullivan, Town Board, I'd like to help, but we now, she comes to all of our meetings, we look at about and report in the building department. The things you had a public hearing on tonight are all two months old. You didn't have a clerk a couple of months ago, so felt didn't have anybody to communicate with. Then you didn't have a second meeting in a month. So here you are tonight, and you had ten of them build up, Phil Cook there, two of them today, and you acted on eight of them tonight. And I keep on hearing about all these illegal apartments and whatnot, and dishes on the roof. I was on the Board of Education for ten years. We had people that were using our school illegally using apartments, it had sometimes four families eating plant by one apartment, so they could enjoy our school. I'm not gonna name those people, you all know who they are. Anyway, in order to discover that, that required a private investigator, so I say here and now, r Sullivan at Highlands dash New York dot gov, I said this at town meetings, notify me. If you know something you think is illegal, we'll follow up on it. 'Cause what they do is they play this up to make it look like the building department is reading that the town is going to hell. And I'd like to take a moment, if anybody wants to join me, for clapping for Philip Hannawell, one of the highest scores in Orange County, and he's your building inspector, right? If you have a private consultant, made you all the fire inspections down, and suffered about five years ago, a poor fireman burned to death down our volunteer, the building department guy, I think, might have gone to jail on that one, we're not doing them, we're doing them, the private firm is doing it, you don't see them all over the place. So now, when you communicate with me, Mr. Ramus and Mr. Carroll does. Anybody else, please email me, don't talk about it here, email me, treat me nice when I come here, we treat you guys very nice at our meeting. And the investors for the AOG are watching all of you, I think they're leaving.
Uh, I just wanted...
Oh, what, it's anything wrong with that?
I just wanted to expand on what Jimmy said, uh, you know, you're gonna be watching tumbleweeds drive down, roll down the street if we don't allow some type of change, we really need it, we need it.
Absolutely.
And the other question, I guess, I don't know if the woman's still here, Ms. Manning, did you approach the issue?
She left.
Oh, okay, um, I, I'm just curious, was the current Highlanders group contacted to sit together and say, listen, we have some great ideas, you have some great ideas, why do we always splinter off? Fourth of July committees, three or four of those, and, I mean, I know what other towns do, I don't really give a crap. This is the town of Highlands, we're a tiny little place, we're the town that can't do it, it just makes no sense to me.
Thanks, Jimmy. Thanks, Jimmy.
But thank you for your...
Thanks, Jimmy. Couple things, and then, um, um, I don't know, it was maybe three months ago, there were some complaints, um, complaints, they were, um, talking about the two smoke shops, you know, in town, and, uh, I just want, I don't know who brought it up, or, but, uh, we heard you, and, uh, loud and clear. You might not think we do when you, you come up here, but we do. And, uh, immediately, I met with the police chief, and we set in motion a, a project, uh, and that's not the right word, but, uh, to if they were doing anything illegal, for them to be shut down. And I wanna thank the Homphos Police Department, and I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Little, she, he may take this back to your department, and, uh, the Orange County Sheriff's Department, and, uh, Chief Jason Torpey. And one smoke shop is closed, and can't even open the front door themselves, and the other one has had some tremendously hefty fines, is being watched. Um, and there are signs on the front of that building, even though it's still open. So I just want you to know, we do hear you, when you, when you tell us things. Um, um, to the town board, to the, and you know, I'll be sending something down, uh, Bob, I'll be sending something down through an email, but to the town board, the village board, the planning board, uh, the zoning board, uh, I'm hoping Philip Hannawell can come, uh, I know the village engineer will be there, and it's also open to the public. But on Friday, the sixteenth of August, at the intermediate school on Mountain Avenue, five, the doors will open up, five presentation for about an hour, from five thirty to six thirty, by Rick Manicosi, Thare Group, whatever it's called, and, uh, the AOG, uh, till seven. The last half hour can be for questions and answers. But it'll be a presentation by AOG and the Thare Group, uh, open to the public, um, at the middle school. So, uh, it'll be on channel twenty-three, I'll have Mary Jane ask her to put in the paper, send in the, what I just said down to you, Bob, if you can get it out to the different boards, I'd appreciate it. Um, um, sometimes I think people think that, uh, folks think that the village and town, uh, uh, don't, uh, communicate, which is wrong if someone says that, they think that maybe we're not working together, they're wrong if they think that. Uh, when there's something to be done together, we do it, whether Bob calls me, or I call him. And right now, we're working on something that, that there's that, that phrase, win-win, uh, I, I think it really does fit here. The village is gonna win, and the town is gonna win. Uh, we're looking at sending up the wastewater from the Hudsonview Trailer Park, um, I don't know, a hundred and fifty trailers, something around like that, uh, to our tr, to our treatment plant, which is, uh, will, will relieve, as I'm told, one-third of the town's wastewater treatment plant, which is great news for them, and the great news for us is we're taking on a customer. So, uh, that's a, a thing that we're working on together. Um, the last thing I have is this, and this is a very sad, uh, situation. Over the last couple of weeks, there have been two pit bull, uh, uh, incidences. Uh, one, uh, one pit bull, uh, three pit bulls that were loose, uh, not tied up, had out of their own yard, and, uh, went into someone else's yard, and, uh, and sadly killed the dog. Within days after that, another pit bull, different one, different than the three, uh, on a leash, was walking their dog on a leash, and someone else had a dog, in fact, it was a beautiful greyhound, big dog, walking by each other. Well, the greyhound has three lips.
Wow.
Yeah, wow, too much, too much. Saturday, I went to visit the lady and her dog, uh, the dog got up, all bandaged up. But this cannot go on. And so, uh, Bob, I'm, 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 I'll talk to you about this, um, I'd like to get a very small committee together, maybe a town councilperson, uh, a village councilperson, I'd like to have the, uh, my police chief will be, I don't know, I would ask that your chief be part of this. And, uh, I don't think we have to invent the wheel, I think that other communities probably haven't addressed this, maybe it's under any dangerous dog, not just pit bull. You know, uh, um, but something has to be done, I, this, this, it's happened twice now in less than a month. So, you know, it's like the flood, you can't tell me it's not coming again, it's gonna happen again.
Pit bulls still here?
Well, that, you know, the pit bulls are still here, after the three, the three seem to be gone. And they were supposed to be put in ten-day, uh, quarantine, but who, who, who monitors that? Is that my job? Is it the animal control officer's job? I don't know, this is why I wanna sit down. I think right now, because we've been, you know, it hasn't ever been an issue, our, our local codes for animals is probably, needs to be looked at. You know, needs to be looked at, 'cause there's some dangerous dogs out there. And, uh, listen, I'm an animal lover, I'm so far over the line, it's ridiculous. But you can't have this, this killing and tearing a dog's leg off, what if it's a person? We're gonna be in trouble. No, Bob, um, no problem, no problem.
Sorry, please, because my grandson, my grandson saw his dog getting killed by three people.
Okay, so, um, I, I'll talk to you about, um, maybe, maybe we can get a small committee, yeah.
And when they went to take the peoples, they didn't have nowhere to put those dogs, so... The animal patrol couldn't take the dogs because they didn't have nowhere to put those peoples. The town didn't have somewhere to put the people. And my grandson had to see his dog getting killed by three people.
Right.
And he don't care, see much, how much he cares?
Yeah, I, I don't care, I don't care.
All right, so, uh, I know, it's, it's a long meeting, all right, so, I, I just wanna say... You know, a lot of time was spent with the senior club, the Salty Senior Club, I'm sorry, man, what was that?
I just wanna let you know that it was a bit two, two and a half years ago. New York has not changed its dog laws in years, you have to have a second provoked act. He has a lawyer who's been fighting it for two and a half years, he was under wound care for six months. So it is happening here, and, um, that needs to be addressed.
Well, I'm addressing it.
Okay, so there were a couple of things that were, really, just took a long time for us to talk about. One is this new senior group, and it's, it was just put together, it's called the Salty Senior Club. I really like their name, by the way, I think it's very cheeky, it's very feisty, you know? And they're just put together by motivated adults who wanna get together, that's all, engage other groups, do good for the community.
Why not together?
They are not there to antagonize or compete with other senior groups, they're not there to do that, okay? The senior center has been underutilized, okay, and the Salty Senior Club just want to use the senior center for its intended purpose, okay? So, let's, let's not fight with them, okay? I really like that the Highlanders have wonderful increased your activity level, it's wonderful use of the, of the building. You used the, uh, outside and created a sensory garden, that's a wonderful use of space. This is all very good, but having another senior club doesn't take anything away from you, okay? They're not trying to take anything away from you, so it should be encouraged, that their activities are, should be encouraged here in the senior center. And each group has to have equal rights with the other. If you have keys to the building, they should have keys to the building. There shouldn't be private offices for you, but no private offices for them, okay?
The seniors do things separate, but do they work together?
So, I also thank, now, two different clubs, two different clubs, two different clubs.
Do, do the seniors get separated, one's one senior...
Two different clubs, correct?
It doesn't make sense.
It does make sense, so, this other thing about the insurance. The insurance, I spoke with our insurance company, and we don't need a secondary insurance, they cover all activities there. It is up to the board to actually demand secondary insurance, and I wish they would, because that is an unnecessary burden for our seniors. It's like eight hundred dollars a year, or a thousand dollars a year, that they have to come up with for secondary insurance for their club, just to use this place. It's unnecessary, it's an unnecessary burden, so, okay?
For decades, clubs have been fundraising for their insurance offices.
So, but it was never like that, it was never like that, the Highlanders never had their own separate insurance to use the building, and it shouldn't be that way. Okay, uh, so, the other thing that came up, uh, the theme I was asking is, I'm not even gonna talk about that, okay? Mr. Snigman, is he still here? Ah, that's too bad, I'm not against him, I, I really appreciate him advocating for a village employee, I really do. But this is not the first time, okay?
That's not your place to say a public address on Facebook for that.
It's not the first time, and this, and Annie, stop, okay, you're not, you don't, this is not a back and forth, okay? This person admitted to it already, okay?
Oh my god.
And just because he's related to the mayor doesn't mean he should be allowed to respond.
Sean.
So that is what I'm gonna say about that, please, please, be quiet, you cannot be doing this back and forth with me.
This is being recorded, correct?
Yeah, I, I think you...
I'll end the meeting, could I say something?
I know that you're protecting your paycheck, that you do everything for your children, for your taxes, you do it, but you should...
I'm gonna end the meeting, so if anyone has anything, I mean, we're...
The more you shout, the more like, it's just not, you're not as...
All right, so the center, I would like, oh, Mrs. Moreno, so Dee Moreno, Dee, I really, Dee is the president of the Chamber of Commerce, uh, and I thank her for the ongoing art walk, that's a lot of work, for the military, for being better, she put that all together, that is wonderful.
Okay, could I say something?
Yeah, okay, I'm trying to get you to talk, go ahead.
Dee Moreno actually organizes a lot of the parades that you see here in Highland Falls, she doesn't get paid for it. In fact, she uses her own money to do all of that. A week ago, running for heroes did a one-mile run, just a one-mile run, for her, in honor of her dead husband, okay? He's a detective, uh, he was, Detective George Moreno, he's a fallen hero, and he died three, four years ago, okay? Three years ago, it was a well-attended event, all she wanted was to have this one-mile run in honor of her husband. My only regret is how Mayor DeNofroyal tried to block that event from happening, as she said, you know?
That's true.
He disrespected her, cursed at her, called her, it's just terrible. So Chief Torpey, he's not here, I thank him, I really thank him for actually closing the street, providing support for Mrs. Moreno, an escort, police car, so that they can actually have a little memorial for him. And I, he did it without insurance or an event board, without him being, uh, engaged. So thank you, Chief Torpey, the police department, for doing the right thing. Uh, this plan that, uh, they tried to pass an introductory law, okay? I know Pellwood has been here for two years, they're trying to say, please, just turn our street back to a residential non-conforming, okay? This plan says it ends at Walker Avenue, okay? So B one after Walker, that's not what you want, okay? The other thing is the square footage requirement, because there are people who actually wanna come here and pay taxes and develop Main Street, okay? And the planning board has been telling us all along what needs to be done to encourage development here. This plan that they wanna put up, introduction of a local law, limits it to twelve hundred and fifty square feet lock requirement for one dwelling, that, that's an enormous amount of land, it's just not for progress, and they restrict the height requirement to forty feet. There's no developer who's gonna come here, because there's no return on investment with those numbers. You're restricting the height, you shouldn't have a square... You're restricting the height, you shouldn't have a square footage requirement, okay? So, this thing is gonna be on again for the next two months. We're gonna talk about it. This thing has been, we've talked about it for two years already. Now, it's gonna extend again, and the developers who are here with the money on hand, ready to start, they're not gonna be able to start, so, okay. I do thank Senator Scoopis for the grant that he gave for the National Night Out. I heard that's gonna be postponed as of rain.
Till October.
So, it's not gonna be tomorrow. But Senator Scoopis did secure a hundred thousand dollars for police departments all across Orange County. Were one of the recipients, Highland Falls and eight other communities. So, I'm glad that that's happening. What else do I have to say? The building department, I'm sorry, I, I know, okay? I look at Highland Falls, and, you know, we are paying an enormous amount of taxes, and we have nothing to show for it. I, I feel it, right? I developed four different buildings and made them look nice using my own money. I can't do it by myself, okay? We need developers to come in. We need a bigger building department. That requires money. That requires manpower. Everything requires money. Money comes from you, taxes, okay? So, it has to be managed correctly. And we have not been managing that money correctly. It could be managed better, and you could get a nicer place. But we have not done that right for decades, okay? Not, I tried to, I'm trying to change it, but we're not doing it, okay? And we just need to spend your money wisely. I think we can get there. That's all I have.
Alright, couple of quick things. Anybody who wants to see the map, come on up later after the meeting. And I can show you the map that we're going back to. It was just stated that all the way to Walker Avenue is going to Business District. It's not. It's right here on the map. It shows all three, alright?
Over the map.
Okay, so, with that being said, there, in this Business District, it's gonna turn into one million, seven hundred and some odd thousand square feet when we go back to this plan where investors can come put some money into our village. Now, I believe, this is just my opinion, that businesses should be on Main Street. Residences, you want high-density residential. Mr. Malacca, I love his ideas. He has walked the streets. That's where we need the residential. Why is it only the businesses or the people on Main Street can make the money when people that live in the residential, if we change the zoning there, we can combine two or three lots and give them the opportunity to achieve the American dream and sell their lots for a lot of money. And then we can put some high-density residential up there. Everybody needs a piece of this pie. I just heard that twenty apartments can't be rented. So, do we really need more apartments on Main Street? I, I find that hard to believe. If we can't rent the apartments in the village, why do we need more? It's just a question to ponder. Hmm, or senor Hall? Hmm, don't know why. Uh, parking. Somebody said out in the audience that there's cars parked on the lawns on Mount Mount. Well, that's something that we need to address when we are looking at is zoning. Parking is a big thing. We really need to look at the parking. Uh, nobody wants to admit it, but parking is the problem with what some of these investors are saying. You need one and a half spaces? Everybody has two cars. If you have two bedrooms, you have two cars. If you have one bedroom, you have two cars. We need to look at parking, and this is something that we all need to discuss at the upcoming public hearings. So, we can all be on the same page, because we all have concerns. Uh, again, just think about this. I brought that number up, the water calculation, alright? Uh, brown water. Oh, yeah, brown water. If we're gonna use an extra eight hundred million gallons of water a year because we have, hmm, uh, these big water surges, how much brown water do you think we're gonna have? These are all things that we need to discuss, but in a manner that isn't so competitive. Let's just discuss them and, and come up with solutions. Uh, you know, it, 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 it's sad, because I, I think we can all work together to achieve, achieve the same goal, to make this village a great place. And it is a village that works with the town and with West Point as well. As long as we stop fighting up here and just come up with good solutions to work better together. I'm with one organization. We got twelve thousand members, alright? We call underneath of one insurance company. But there's thirty-six sub-clubs in this organization. It would be who the seniors to get underneath of one umbrella with all of their sub-clubs and share the cost of insurance if it would help. God forbid something happens that the village wouldn't get held onto. That's all I got.
Pete, okay, um, I just wanted to mention this. About two weeks ago, I spent five days out of about eight days with the AOG and the Fair Group talking about all this stuff that we just heard Jimmy talk about. On the sixteenth, we have a meeting at the middle school. Uh, seating starts at five. At five-thirty, they'll start doing a presentation with, with a video they're gonna show us of what is now and what it could be if we, if we, you know, take that next step. Then there'll be a half hour of question and answers. There's gonna be the village board, the town board, the school board, the, uh, the planning board, the zoning board, are all gonna be sitting up front. We're gonna take questions for that half hour from some of these people, because they're the specialists in this different subjects that we're gonna talk about. The public is gonna be able to go to a website where they can sit up and ask their questions. We're not gonna be able to stay there. It'd take forever to do that, because we're opening this to the whole public. It's gonna be in the auditorium at the middle school. That'll answer all these questions, because we go over this every time I come to these meetings. The same stuff. Let's just get the big picture, so come there on the sixteenth and we'll do that. The other thing is, I was called here to this building about a week and a half ago to present to the high school kids that were, one of the Salty women were bringing here. She wanted me to discuss about history. I invited Michael Graver. He couldn't come. He was sick. Uh, I tried to get Richie Sullivan, and he was out of town. So, I came along, and I was here waiting and waiting. Finally showed up. The kids had no interest. They were sitting on the bench right outside by the door. I was, I was already here. I went out, and they didn't even say hello to me. Finally, I, I was in here putting, you know, turning the lights on and everything. They finally came in and everything. These kids wanted to know about history. I said to them, I'll take you through it. Give me a topic. They didn't have one. I said, I'll take you back to the time when the last Ice Age came through. They just looked at me. I said, well, we can move to the dinosaurs. They didn't say nothing. I said, okay, how about the Indians? Thought I'd like that. Nothing. I said, we can go to the Battle of Fort Ben-Governe. I said, we can go to the first settlers here, and, uh, no, nothing. I said, would you like to know about the famous people of the? They said, no. I went all the way up to present. I said, you wanna hear about athletes, maybe? They said, no. I said, what do you want to hear about? They said, a teenage club. I said, what? Okay. I said, well, does West Point have a teenage club? They said, no. I said, alright. I said, well, that's interesting. I said, when I was a kid, they had one, and we were allowed to go to that. I said, Highland Falls had one for a while, I said, but it didn't work out. I said, but I'll look into it. They said, okay. I said, do you have anything else you want to talk about? They said, taxes. I said, wow. Two high school kids, you know, that's all who showed up. And so, I said, well, just think of it this way. If you want a house in Highland Falls, you pay about ten thousand dollars a year between the three different taxes you pay. I said, half of it goes to the school tax, ha- after that five, uh, ten thousand. I said, what happens is, uh, but each kid, you have to understand, it costs thirty thousand dollars a year to send them to school, for grade school to high school. I said, so, we're lucky West Point comes here, gives us, you know, compensation for their students, and Garrison does that too, the state chips in, the federal government chips in. I said, but it's, it's, you know, a scary plan that we have, an arrangement we have. I said, so, is there anything else you'd like to know? They said, no. They got up and left. They didn't care about the taxes, really. They didn't care about the teenage club either. Because I found out the teenage club, they do have one of ours, the next day I asked. You know, so they didn't even know that. You live here and you don't know there's one there? I don't understand that. But that was the first time I had to deal with Salty. The second time, they asked, we had the meeting, and we talked to them about the insurance and all the other things and everything, and we got, it was kind of a hostile, uh, meeting, you know? The next thing you know, what happened? We said that it was okay. They were gonna have a meeting here. They didn't have taxes. They didn't have insurance, but we let them have the meeting. They had the meeting, right? Two people showed up. One was the founder and one other girl. And what they did was, they were gonna have a meeting, and then they were gonna go out and look at the art war, walk, they go. So, they did. They went out and walked up and down the edge of the road and looked at the art, art, uh, display. Left the door open here. Anybody could have gotten in. Then they came back, and that was the end of the meeting. Now, I don't know about the Salty thing. I, I hope they have some people that are gonna be in part, you know, part of this. But I think it's a setup. It's just a bunch of law to disrupt the, the, everything. To just get the seniors arguing with the Salty group and the Anne Molina group and everything. And as they argue between the three, three families of seniors, then they're gonna turn around, and they'll have one thing in common. They all hate Joe because of the election. And then they're gonna campus the whole community, knocking on doors and talking about the board of directors and, and Joe. That's what's really going on. It's a setup.
You heard about the squad.
You were pointed by Joe. That's why you're saying that. Come on.
That's disgusting.
Come on, Pete.
Don't give your father.
Hey, Pete, don't even with my father. Don't even with my father.
Don't, don't tell me you're that.
My father, don't even talk about my father.
You sure? Okay, Jimmy?
Okay, I'll try to be quick and, uh, precise, you know? Uh, first, I'll give the monthly police report. We had a total of eight hundred and sixty-six calls in July. July was a busy month. Eleven arrests, five of which were misdemeanors, two were felonies, four were violations. Twenty-six summonses issued, twenty-two of them were parking, two traffic, and two general summonses. And total revenues collected were one thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. Total mileage driven was just under thirty-nine hundred miles. So, a couple of quick things. I just want to comment real quick on the FEMA, FEMA projects. When the flood happened roughly this time last year, FEMA's response was very good. And there's actually two different forms of FEMA. There's the federal portion and the state portion, right? So, under the state portion, again, I'm just gonna try to do this quick. It's called DISHs. I won't get into the whole acronym of what it means. But that's the state portion, and then they communicate and interact with the federal. As the mayor stated, as the mayor stated, and also will be in the news, uh, I think it's, yeah, news, it's still called the News of the Highlands, you know, it's a newspaper. There will be the diagram of the processes you have to go through in order to get a project approved. It's actually quite grueling, especially if you're a municipality and you want to move forward on a project that's drainage, because it never stops raining, or something that's, you know, dire and you want to move quicker. Uh, it's difficult. And interestingly enough, when you talk to FEMA and you say, hey, you know, like, you know, how, you know, we appreciate how the funds are coming. Sometimes they prepay for, for a, a portion of the work, like they did at the Little League field. They actually gave us the money in advance because they liked the project. They liked what we were doing there. You know, like, what happens if this twelve and a half percent runs out? Or is there ever potential for the FEMA money to run out? Yeah, the answer from the federal government and the state is yes. And I said, so what happens? And they said, well, we never tell you that the money's there forever. We tell you to fix the problem. So, that was a conversation I actually had with one of the federal people two weeks ago, which was remarkable, when we were trying to figure out everything. The state played the federal government, the federal government played the state. It was bureaucracy at its finest. So, hopefully, we'll get back on track with that, uh, and, and the residents, as we continue to take care of the municipal portion of what we need to get done. There's still a few drainage projects that we need to get done, Mertz Avenue, um, and also Saddle Lee Grove area. These are projects are approved, so we want to get forward and moving on that. A couple of comments in regards to insurance. As long as I've been on the board, we've required insurance for private groups. You have to remember, these are private groups, like Rotary, or, uh, the Highlanders, or the Knights of Columbus, if they wanted to use the building that they used at home. Uh, we, we would need insurance. I think that's been gen- the general policy. And that's kind of been the general policy for the last few administrations. So, I don't know what people are coming up and saying, you don't need insurance. Or better yet, let's wait for something to happen and then ask for insurance going forward. That, to me, sounds very unnerving. Now, if the board wants to come up with a policy, and the policy is no insurance for anybody, then we could do that. Then we could do that. To me, that puts the liability back on the residents. So, we would have to discuss that, at least that would be for me. But I, I do agree with coming up with a policy for this building. And that way, whoever needs to use it, and the only reason why the Highlanders have keys is because the Highlanders are the oldest group, no pun intended, that have been using the building, that always came and, and wanted a home. They used to come to the meetings. They were started at the town board. Then they came to the village board, and they were yelling and begging and asking. And then finally, they got a home. And so, that's why they have keys. It doesn't mean exclusivity, okay? It's a municipal building. And if we want to have a blood drive here, you can have a blood drive here. There's nobody stopping a blood drive. You know why? Because seniors can come give blood. Anybody can come give blood. So, that, I don't know what that means, that we can't have other functions here if it's not senior-related or community-related. We have a meeting here, it's fine. All people are welcome, including seniors. If we have a blood drive here, all people are welcome, including seniors, so you can do it. You can have it. And lastly, but not leastly, is, I know as we move closer to March, you know, tensions rise with the comments. Uh, and I would simply ask that if you're gonna make a comment, like, let's talk about the zoning real quick. If you're gonna make a comment, this is just the baseline. We've been talking about this for two years, two years. And so, now we're trying to put it forward. And every member of this board has made different comments about square footage sizes. We were at three fifty, we were at three hundred, we were at five hundred, we were at six hundred. We were at zero. We were at twelve fifty. We're at two thousand. We're at twenty-five hundred. So, here we are at twelve fifty. Doesn't necessarily mean that that's what we're gonna vote on. It's just the baseline. The forty-foot requirement for the height, again, is a baseline. If we want to add five more feet to the planning board and say, hey, the planning board has the ability to go five extra feet, fine. We could do that. We could work that in this document. But, but not every single thing that we have to do between now and March needs to be politicized and bastardized, and then made to, get everybody riled up and scared. So, I, I just hope as we go through this process to finally put a product forward, um, that we look at it justly, make comments based upon knowledge, and not just make a comment to just try to rile up a group and then start screaming and yelling about it. So, let's do it the right way, because this could potentially affect decades down the road of what happens here. And, and on a personal note, the comments about forty or fifty, sixty-foot buildings, no community in Orange County, no community in Orange County is building fifty-five to sixty-foot tall buildings. There's two communities. I suggest you take a ride around Orange County. Take a ride up to Deer Park, take a ride up Seventeen. Those are the only two communities that are making fifty-five, sixty-foot square foot buildings. And also the town of, uh, uh, village of Blooming Grove, uh, Bloomingburg. So, I would suggest you take a ride in Orange County, take a look at what's going on, take a look at the buildings. I think you gotta be careful. I want the investors to come. As was mentioned by a trustee, there is a rate of return if you do it right. That person did it right. I applaud that person. So, as we move forward, let's just do it with open mind and be calm and courteous. That's all I have.
Take the motion with your official.
Wait, can I, can I say something?
Yes.